All right, it looks like it's about that time, 9:00 AM. And we'll be starting our first Board of Supervisors meeting of the year, January 10th, 2023. As customary, we'll start off with a moment of silence, and I have two. Does anyone else have any?
Yes, I've got one.
Moke has one as well. Anyone else? Yeah, okay. So we'll start off with Moke, and then Vice Chair Pyska. And then Supervisor Sabatier, then myself.
I'd like to give a moment of silence for Jessica Pinya, a Middletown Ranchery tribal member that we lost on December 30th.
There was a fatality yesterday on Highway 29, and just give our thoughts to that family and that individual.
Right around the Christmas holiday, a gentleman by the name of Frederick Wilson in the city of Clear Lake, or also lived around in the county, passed away. And I just want to highlight that there's some substance abuse problems in this county that we need to do better. There are some mental health issues that we need to do better. Unfortunately, I know that Freddie reached out to many people, was not able to get the help he needed, and so I want to hold him in our hearts and our prayers today.
And then I have a moment of silence for Jimbo Tarpley II and Sue Harville, both of Upper Lake and have been in Upper Lake and cornerstones of Upper Lake for some time. So I'll offer those moments of silence as well. Maria, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is our Item 4, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any of those? Not seeing any. We will move on to Item 5, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial. However, if there is something that needs to be pulled, the Board of Supervisor can do so, or a member of the public can do so, and we'll either address it immediately or at a different time, in case we have to get others here. So I'll go ahead and open that up. Supervisor Sabatier?
Was asking to pull Items 5.12 and 5.14 for a later date to fix their request of consideration.
And then I see here we have 5.11 as well, 5.11? Is that... Yes. Okay, 5.11. And is that one for just a later time or a later date?
Pull it in place on the 24th.
Oh, got it. Okay, so these are pulling different dates. Got it. And is there any others for the board? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull a consent agenda item? And if someone can check Zoom for me. Okay. If you're on Zoom and you have your hand up, if you can unmute if it's regarding the consent agenda item to be pulled, please let us know what that is.
I don't think that's a consent.
You're letting me in right now so I can see it, but I would suspect that that's a public comment. But I could be wrong.
Okay, so with that, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Items 5.1 through 5.10, 5.13, and 5.16. What do we go through, 17? I can't see.
Yes, 17.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is our 901, the 6.1 timed items, and we'll be conducting the election of the Chair of the Board of Supervisors and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors for 2023. And as customary, the outgoing Chair will conduct the election. So Ms. Grant, do I need to open it up for public after we discussed two and go from there as well? I'm pretty sure we do.
Yes, every item on the agenda is susceptible to public comment.
Okay, so I see we have a hand up. Go ahead.
Yep, I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Pyska to move into the Chair position, and Supervisor Moke Simon to be the next Vice Chair. Second.
I have a... Well, I need to open it up to the public first, and then we'll go from there. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? And is there anyone on Zoom?
Do not see any hands up at the moment.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action. I do have a motion from Supervisor Sabatier, and a second from Supervisor Green. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain, and motion carries. And so with that, it looks like we would switch seats now, right?
Time for musical chairs.
Musical chairs. I better give this to her too.
And then the signs.
That's yours. And then there's the proclamation right there.
Oh, I did the double. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Are you going that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know if you want me to have the edge.
Take the edge.
I know the edge is a little dangerous.
Do you want the edge?
No. Take the lead to the right.
Now you have me going far right, so.
Can we trade chairs?
Yes. Oh. That one squeaks too, so it's always like, yes, I don't have the squeaky chair no more. Well, I'm stuck with it.
Thank you for my chair.
Might have been easier if I just went for the edge. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so the... And I forgot my glasses this morning, so it'll get bigger. So 6.2, our 902 item, sitting as Lake County Board of Equalization, oh, we already did that one, oh, election of Chair of the County of Lake Board of Equalization for 2023.
And I'm ready to nominate the same, our current Chair and Vice Chair, to be the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Equalization for 2023. So Chair Pyska and Vice Chair Simon.
So open it up for public comment. And is there anybody in the board chambers with a comment on this item, or in the Zoom room?
There are no hands in the Zoom.
No? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, correct? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. Okay, 6.3, sitting as the Lake County In-Home Support Services, election Chair and Vice Chair of the County of Lake In-Home Service Services Public Authority Board of Directors for 2023.
I'm ready to make a nomination, a motion to have our Chair Pyska as the Chair for the IHSS, and our Vice Chair being Vice Chair Moke Simon.
There will be a second.
Okay, is there public input in the board chambers or on the Zoom? Okay, with the motion and a second, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And our 904 item is administer the oath of office to District 2 Supervisor Bruno Sabatier. And B, administer the oath of office to District 3 Supervisor Eddie Crandall. And C, administer oath of office to Treasurer-Tax Collector Patrick Sullivan. And D, administer the oath of office to Clerk Auditor Genevieve Harrington. And E, administer the oath of office to Sheriff Coroner Udis Howe. And F, administer the oath of office to Assessor Recorder Richard Ford. And G, administer the oath of office to District Attorney Susan Cronus. And H, administer the oath of office to Lake County Superintendent of Schools Brock Falkenberg. And is that Maria? No, yes.
Are we doing all at once?
All of them together?
Nice.
Okay.
This is a ceremonial circumstance, so doing them all together is fine.
Sheriff Howe would like this written to the record. Because he's not here, he went to Sheriff's School. Right. Okay, thanks.
I'll have everyone raise your right hand, and then I'll have everyone state their name. We'll start with Brock, but aye?
Aye.
Brock Falkenberg.
Richard Ford.
Eddie Crandall.
Patrick Sullivan.
Bruno Sabatier.
Susan Cronus.
Genevieve Harrington.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
So can I get everybody together? Oh, sorry.
I guess so.
Let's see. That's Susan. Let's see. Good, that looks great. Good. Okay, now can we get all the supervisors together now?
We're done?
We're done. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So maybe I can have all of you just come down. That's...
Needs another picture.
Okay, now Brad's asking to get a separate picture. Thanks. I don't know. So can I get... Yeah, individual.
Does everybody get...
I don't know what he wants you for.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, you didn't have a look? I'm gonna cross. Okay, cool. They're for the wanted.
The wanted picture.
Oh, is he coming? Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
He's gonna blow everything up to make it really easy to read.
Well, it looks like everybody stepped out, but I'm... Congratulations to all of our newly sworn in elected. I look forward to working with you in this next term. And we do have a statement from our Sheriff, Rob Howe, who is away at Sheriff's School this week. Is he Houston? Is that where it is? Yeah. I don't... No, it's in San Luis, I think. Houston, yes. First, I want to apologize for not attending this meeting in person. I have been scheduled for California State Sheriff's Association, CSSA, new sheriff training for the entire week. As I understand it, this training is extremely valuable to new sheriffs and is only offered once every four years or so. I would like to sincerely thank the Board for the faith and trust they have shown in me with this appointment to the position of Lake County Sheriff. It means a great deal to me. I take the responsibility very seriously, and I have every intention of rewarding their confidence. As a lifelong Lake County resident and as someone whose entire professional career has been in local law enforcement, I am happy and excited to be given the opportunity to continue to serve the citizens of our county. Sincerely, Rob Howe. So at this time, I'll open it up for public input. Do we have any in the chambers or in the Zoom room?
None in the Zoom room.
Okay, then we'll close this item and move to our 906 item, which is public input. Do we have public input in the board chambers?
We do have a hand up in Zoom.
Okay.
Haji Worf?
Haji Worf? Okay, go ahead. You have your three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Good morning, Board members. My name is Haji Worf from Upper Lake, and I thank you for this chance to speak. I'd like to bring to your attention what happened at the Lucerne Area Town Hall Special Meeting that took place on Wednesday, December 21st. This advisory group, referred to as LAFF, met to pass a resolution condemning the Lucerne Hotel Proposal planned by the Scots Valley Pomo Nation. In the initial draft of the resolution, written by Kurt McKelvey, Chair of LAFF, the term colonial behavior was used against the Scots Valley Pomo. Arguments for the inclusion of the term were stubbornly made by Kurt, despite vehement objections from the public. One fervent supporter of keeping the offensive language was John Jensen, co-owner of Lake County News. He stated, "The term was often hurled at us, taken to mean white people, so restricting its use in this case would be a restriction on his free speech." Ultimately, the inflammatory wording was removed, but only reluctantly. The audacity and hubris of these white men, purposefully inciting racial tensions by accusing a tribal nation of colonizing behavior, is an absolute embarrassment to our community. Given the horrific history of our county towards the Pomo nations, this behavior is detestable and calls for consequences. Therefore, I urge the Board to revoke the appointment of Kurt McKelvey to LAFF. The poor judgment and cultural insensitivity he demonstrated is a colossal disservice to this community. Also, the Scots Valley Pomo Nation deserves a public apology from John Jensen for his egregious behavior. In addition, I'd like to see closer scrutiny and more guidance from the Board on this project. The neighbors have been inflamed by a series of misleading articles and a spiteful editorial written by the Lake County News. Not widely known is the fact that co-owners of Lake County News, Elizabeth Larson and John Jensen, also run the Lucerne Area Revitalization Association, or LARA. They also are near neighbors of the hotel and have a competing proposal for its use. Therefore, it's in their self-interest to condemn this project and try to stop it by whatever means necessary. They are incapable of objectivity. In the future, I urge you to remember their appalling behavior when you consider any form of partnership with these bad actors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have another hand up? That's it? Any... Okay, and then in the board chambers? Greg Baccianini?
Good morning. My name is Greg Bianchini. I live on 13th Avenue in Lucerne, and I've lived there for about nine years now. The problem is, I'm still having... I've been here 10 times now, nine times last year, is the issue with the needle exchange program. It's just getting unsafe, and it's just not fair to the residents that live on 13th Street. And on December 27th, at a little after 5:00, as soon as Anita pulled up with their needle exchange truck, two boys rode up on their bicycles, and I saw that two boys rode up to the truck, and I watched them, and as they left, they came down the street, which I'm only four houses down. So I stopped the two little boys, and I asked them, I said, "Well, what did Anita... Did she give you anything?" And the little boys, they said, "Well, yeah, she gave me condoms." She's giving 14- and 15-year-old boys condoms? So I just wanted to let you guys... Let all of you guys know that this is what's happening now, and it's just too dangerous to have that truck on the street with the kids. And I've seen multiple, multiple children and young people coming up to that truck, and I'm afraid what's going to happen next is just going to be a huge disaster. These children are our future, and the last thing we want them to do is be sticking a pipe in their mouth or a syringe in their arm. And now, these children know that at any time... Well, on Tuesdays, they can come up to that truck, and it's free. They could get drug paraphernalia, and I guess condoms now. So, I mean, this is really serious, you guys. And it's not that I'm against this program, it's how it's being operated and where it's being operated. This needs to end. It needs to be somewhere set up where it's safe and no children, absolutely no kids. I had a problem when I was younger too, right around that age, 14, 15 years old. I know how it starts. And that's the last thing I want to do, is see these kids addicted to drugs, being sex workers, and homeless. And I see that coming. It's just a huge disaster. So if you guys could please just have her stop setting up her truck on 13th Avenue in Lucerne on Tuesday. She's supposed to be set up there tonight, and this is just a huge disaster. Please, please, help us. Our children don't need to see this. And it's just... They could just walk up to the truck, and I don't think she's checking any IDs. And it's just a disaster waiting to happen. Please, please, help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, then we will move on to our 907 item, 6.6, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Lake County. Would you like to read it? I forgot my glasses.
Do we have anybody come up who's here for this item? Yes, come on all the way up.
Border Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating the Month of January 2023 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas human trafficking is a serious crime that affects people of all races, age, and gender, human trafficking is a borderless crime against individuals that violates the most basic human rights and deprives victims of human dignity and denies freedom to 32 million people around the world. And human trafficking is the fastest-growing criminal industry globally. California ranks third among the states in the number of potential reports of human trafficking. And whereas a serious form of human trafficking involves the exploitation of children and youth for commercial sex acts, it is imperative that our young people and their families learn how to recognize risks and resist predators who use coercion and threats to manipulate children and young adults into sex and labor trafficking. And whereas the Lake County Family Resource Center is instrumental in leading the way in the Lake County... in County of Lake in addressing human trafficking, providing 24-hour hotline services and continuing support. Advocacy and accompaniment to survivors in preventing human trafficking in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to help recognize and acknowledge existence, and it is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all of our residents. And whereas many organizations such as the District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Lakeport Police Department, Clear Lake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending human trafficking in Lake County and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Month of January 2023 is designated as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Lake County, and our community is urged to support the efforts of the agencies assisting victims of human trafficking, and urges all local governments, schools, businesses, and community members to be aware and report any suspicious activity to the local police departments and help shine a light on trafficking. Passed and adopted on this 10th day of January 2023 and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much.
Can I pull this out?
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
All right. So my name is Kara Roberts, and I'm the Program Coordinator for the Human Trafficking Program. We've been doing a lot of work the last two years. We've helped 36 different people, men, women, and children in this county that are victims of human trafficking. So when the question's asked, "Is this happening in Lake County?", it's absolutely happening here, and it's happening more than that. So in the last two years, we've offered 2,700 services to those 36 clients, and we were just granted another three years. So we have a lot of good work to do. We're very proud of the work we do, all of us here at Lake FRC, and we look forward to working with you.
I just want to make one final comment, too. You know, in the proclamation, I think it said everything, but if you see something, say something. It said, "Report it to the police," whether it's Lake County Sheriff, anything, please do that. Obviously, our most vulnerable are young folks, the internet, and all those opportunities there. Really make them vulnerable. So like I said, if you see something, say something. And if there's an opportunity to go to a training that is put on by this great organization, please do that. And I know they've offered it to multiple businesses and other things that are around the county, so thank you for the hard work that's being done.
Can I add one more?
Yes.
And they don't need to report it to just the police if they don't feel safe. They can come to us. We're confidential, and we can hold that confidentiality for them.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, good. This isn't allowing.
Sam, just take the shot. Just take the shot.
Thank you. Okay, we will be moving ahead with our 9:11 a.m. item, 6.7, reappoint members of the Lake County Planning Commission for a two-year term. So we'll do these individually, probably, and better. Anita? Okay. So for District One, reappointment of Commissioner John Hess.
Make the motion first, or how?
Public input.
Public input. Any public input on Commissioner Hess' reappointment? Seeing none in the Zoom room or in the chambers, I will entertain a motion.
Chair, I would like to make a motion, but I'll make a comment. Obviously, I want to thank all of the Commissioners that are going to be reappointed today. It's a very challenging job that they have, but a very important one. So I just, I want to thank all of them, but also I want to give my thanks and appreciation to John Hess, my District One Supervisor. He's diligent, reads everything, he comes to the meetings prepared and ready to go, so I really appreciate his dedication and his service, and I can't thank him enough for being my, my appointment. So with that, I'd like to nominate John Hess to be the District One Planning Commissioner.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. District Two Supervisor Everado Chavez Perez.
So Everado, I've been watching him grow, asking more questions, better understanding. I know I had a good conversation with Director Turner, just to check in, to see if there's anything we need to have a conversation with him about, but it seems that she has the same perspective, that he, he's doing what he should be doing, and I'd love for him to keep going. So after public comment, I'll make my motion to move him forward.
Do we have any public input in the chambers or in the Zoom room? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
And I'll just make one final comment. After the retirement of Bob Malley, there were large shoes to fill. Appreciate John Hess and his years of service. He comes with a lot of knowledge and information, but I think Everado's moving into those shoes really well. So I make a motion to approve District Two Planning Commissioner Everado Chavez Perez.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Well, congratulations, Commissioner Perez. District Three Batulun Brown?
I got him. Thank you. So yeah, District Three Batulun Brown. I'd like to reappoint him, of course, and I'll just say a few words. I really like the makeup of our planning commission. We have a lot of different aspects when you think about, you know, having, you know, an AB 52, which Batulun has a specialty in, he's a tribal historic preservation officer and has been one before. You know, I like seeing that we have someone representing the real estate side of things with Christina, and then like, Meili, can, you know, she's, you know, experienced in ag and farming and things of that nature. Everado, I really appreciate watching him. I've seen him out in the hallway after meetings, studying more and getting ready. So I mean, and I, I worked with John when I was a planning commissioner, so I know legislatively and experience-wise, he's very experienced, and it really makes up a great makeup when you have the, when you think of diversity and you think of the outlay of how they look at things. So once you go through public input, I'll go ahead and make my motion.
Okay, do we have any public input in the Zoom room or in the board chambers?
Nope.
Okay. So seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
And I'll just add real quick, Everado's also studying to be an engineer and has been going to school for engineering school for quite a while, so that also brings a different level of experience as well.
Brings a lot more to it.
I agree with your diversity statement.
So with that, I will, I will motion to appoint Batulun Brown to District Three Planning Commissioner.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Welcome Commissioner Brown for another term of service. District Four Christina Price.
Yeah, well, I guess we're doing public input first. I would like to thank Commissioner Price for her service in the prior term, and I would like to echo the comments made by my fellow supervisors here on the quality of the entire planning commission. It is a rare privilege to see people from such a wide diversity of backgrounds come to that. Planning commission is not always the funnest place to be. Funnest, is that a word? Anyway, but it's really good experience. It's really good to see people willing to make that type of commitment to our community and to dive down into the weeds, if you will, with some of the projects that come, come to their attention. So it is my intention after public comment to nominate Christina Price for reappointment to District Four Commissioner.
Okay, do we have any public input in the chambers or in Zoom?
You have a hand up on Zoom?
Jennifer Smith.
Jennifer Smith?
Good morning, Supervisors. Jennifer Smith, I just wanted to thank all of the Commissioners, and I'm excited to see the reappointment of a commission that I've worked with and the Lake County Cannabis Alliance has worked with well. While we're not always on the same side of issues, I appreciate the time and the effort and the thankless job that the commission must feel like sometimes. The work is hard. I'm excited that the relationships we've built will continue and that we're able to have such a diverse experience on that commission, and I think that we are served well, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Okay.
There's no further public input. I move to reappoint District Four Planning Commissioner Christina Price.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Welcome back Commissioner Price. Okay, District Five Commissioner Meili Field. I am delighted that she has agreed to sign up for a full term. She came in midterm this last cycle, and I really appreciate her background in farming and her critical thinking, and I look forward to having her serve this next term. Is there any public input in the Zoom room or in the board chambers?
There is a comment in the Zoom room, Richard Durham.
Richard Durham?
Hello, my name is Richard. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. My name is Richard Durham. I want to thank Ms. Meili Field for donating, basically donating her time and effort and her experience in organic farming. I just have one or two comments. One is that the ordinance provides for areas where cannabis can be cultivated, and I've heard some disparaging things come from her as far as neighbors. And we went through a long time to develop the ordinance so that it would be applicable. We can't make substitutions, the way that I've heard her say. And the other one is that she's also made comments on the tainting of the flavor of grapes from the tripods of cannabis, which is unproven, and I would just like to see those two points not addressed by her. And if she's not able to, if she could recuse herself when it comes to those cannabis points. Outside of that, I thank you for your service, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Someone like to make?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion for you. Chair, I move to reappoint District Five Commissioner Meili Field for 2020. There you go. I think I got it.
I'll go ahead and second that, and just a real quick comment. All of our planning Commissioners, again, bring varied experiences, and again, the projects that come before them can be fairly complicated and stuff like that. One reason we do support people in this type of service is the opportunity for personal growth. So all of us have sometimes said things that maybe we're not entirely on, on track with the task at hand. I'm confident, again, in the entirety of this planning commission, being able to slog through these hard issues, experience some personal and intellectual growth, and I'm very confident that that will happen with all of these appointees.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, welcome back Commissioner Field. We'll move on to 6.8, our 9:30 a.m. item, Consideration of Proclamation Declaring the Existence of a Local Emergency Due to Persistent Drought, Habitat Loss, and Potential Extinction of Clear Lake Hitch. Supervisors Green and Crandall.
Yeah, thank you. If I understand correctly, we are not ready for this at this time. We did have requests from staff. Obviously, the, the water and the flooding and all that has created an impact on us, but also I did want to continue to reach out to some of our other partner state agencies to present. So my intent at this time is to request the board to continue this item to January 24th, but to accept anybody that didn't get the memo, we were going to continue it today. If there is anybody who would like to provide their input on this item today, it would be appropriate to accept that input. Is that correct? All right.
Yeah, we'll open it up for public input.
So the intent is to continue it to the 24th, but thank you.
I think it's the right move to, to allow folks to, to look at the material and be better prepared, so we have more people at the table to discuss this item.
Okay, so we will open it up to public input now. We have people in the chamber? Go ahead. So you can state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Phil Moy. I'm just wondering if this may be, this issue might be better served by an independent meeting rather than just being taken up by the board. My sense, just on reading the news articles and going through all of the background materials myself, there is quite a bit there, and if we can get the Fish and Wildlife people here and the state biologists here to speak, I think that'd be worthy of an evening or a good solid couple hours. I see you have quite a bit of time here allotted on the agenda previously, but I think it might be a good standalone issue for the board to consider rather than just going right into the proclamation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments in the board chambers? In the Zoom?
There is a hand on Zoom, Janine Pfeifer.
Okay, Janine, go ahead, please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Dr. Janine Pfeifer. I am an ethnoecologist, and I work with the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. I just had one question, perhaps related to what the gentleman noted earlier. Looking at the proclamation and the way it's written, it's very thorough. It does echo many of the recommendations made at the summit. There's just one point that stands out to me, and this is why I think a full staff report would be helpful, is item two, apparently the county is recommending something that is in direct opposition to what the tribes are recommending. So that's a little, it, it provokes curiosity, but, but my overall concern is that this is a very complex issue. The proclamation is highly detailed, and so I'm wondering if there will be a staff report accompanying it for the January 24th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a response for that?
Yeah, I want to thank the speakers, and again, I apologize. We kept this on the agenda in part because I did want those background materials, and so for those who haven't had the chance to look at the agenda yet, there are four attachments to this item, and I do recommend people go down and download that and take a look at that. And then when this issue does come back on the 24th, I understand the recommendation. Yeah, there's probably need to have any number of broader-based meetings, but the proposal that was floated today and will be addressed in more detail on the 24th is whether this county, the county board should adopt an emergency proclamation, and if so, what the scope of that proclamation might be. As the tribal representative noted, there is a draft proposal to not fully accept the tribes' request of Fish and Wildlife, but I do expect that, that's a very debatable issue, and that's another thing we need to talk about. Does the county want to take a position pro, con, or neutral on that particular thing? I, I do expect that the, when it comes back on the 24th, the draft proclamation will be simplified to some extent. There are some actions on there that I think would be more, more appropriate to consider separately. I do want the ability to speak out with some of my fellow colleagues on some of the projects that might result. But what, what the focus will be, or what the intended focus will be on the 24th is whether to adopt an emergency proclamation, and if so, what the contents of that proclamation will say, and there may be some discussion as to whether to support the emergency listing request made by the tribes and Fishing Game Commission, or to go in a different direction. So I very much appreciate the comments that have been made here today. I do expect this package will be tweaked just a little bit when we post it for the 24th, and I very much look forward to a robust and interesting discussion from all our stakeholders. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah Ryan.
Okay. Sarah Ryan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Okay, this is Sarah Ryan, Environmental Director with the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. I just wanted to answer the question of the gentleman who spoke. There are a series of listening sessions that the, the Water Boards is doing with various stakeholders in the county, including Farm Bureau and other agricultural interests. So that is happening right now, and if you need more information about those listening sessions, I would recommend reaching out to the Farm Bureau to see how to kind of get on that list. I believe that there's a meeting with them tomorrow night for the agricultural interests, and there's more listening sessions that they are setting up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Is that it? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. So this is going to be continued?
Did we lock in at time? Do we continue at a date and time certain? It's not a public hearing, so we can just continue it to the 24th. All right.
Is that consensus, or do we need a motion?
It can be consensus or motion. You're just continuing the item to a date to be determined at a time to be determined. As, as Supervisor Green pointed out, it's not a public hearing.
Right.
I'm in agreement with the 24th.
Okay.
I'm in agreement, but I do have a question based on the comment that we just heard. Supervisor Green, are, are you aware of how long these listening sessions are going to take place? Because I'm not sure if this needs to come before those listening sessions are done, or if it needs to come back after those listening sessions are done, because it may seem like it's putting something where there, a decision might be made where people might not have had the chance to really gather the information like they would through a listening session, which seems more intimate rather than kind of, just kind of curious what you know of those listening sessions and what the timeline looks like for that.
I would, I, I would probably have to defer to others who have been involved in that. I know as this, there was a summit held at Big Valley Ranchery in December that had a lot of agencies. That was kind of an inter-agency governmental meeting and was conducted on that basis. After that, I know independently, we had a representative from State Water Resources Control Board reach out to seek a board. Control Board reach out to seek a board agenda item on the 24th, probably to do a presentation about basically where they're at on that. They didn't know at the time that I was working on a emergency proclamation request. I didn't know they were planning to do these field things. That's kind of how they roll. They did some of that when we were rolling up our cannabis regs several years ago. So I very much appreciate the outreach. I don't know what the content is. I don't think it's going to be critical for us to link up with that. I mean, when they go out and they speak to the community, everyone is welcome, ourselves included. And whatever clarification they do at those listening sessions, I certainly expect they would bring that same messaging to the board. And they did. They have requested directly that they would be able to address the board on this issue on the 24th. So I'm confident that whatever else is happening out there in the community will be value-added discussion. I don't think it's exclusive that, you know, we wait to a certain date to allow those listening sessions to happen. You know, the more meetings, the merrier, and the more input we can get, the merrier. But I expect that will be a supplement to whatever's happening with our discussion here at the board.
Okay.
Okay, so we've agreed to revisit this at the end of the month. And those, our next timed item is not until 1:15, so we'll come back to that. 7.32? Okay, 7.2. Consideration of Direction to the Cannabis Task Force to Prioritize Regulations Surrounding Cannabis Retail Operations in the First Quarter of 2023. And this is brought to you by myself and Supervisor Crandall. The reason I brought this up, I want to look, so going back about a year and a half ago when Supervisor Simon and I were tasked with looking at the cannabis ordinance and then met with then Director Darby, there was a discussion on retail locations and how that would be handled throughout the county. And that discussion had never came to the full board. And, oh yes, please join us, Director Turner. So it's come to my attention that we have two retail cannabis locations coming to Main Street in downtown Kelseyville. And I thought this is a good time to have that conversation about what it looks like in our communities, particularly the unincorporated areas, in our little downtowns, in our commercial districts. And so one thing that Director Turner and I discussed is having a buffer zone between cannabis locations, and also looking at a zoning permit possibly. So those are the two items I want to discuss with the board today. And did you want to add anything?
No, just that I was glad to be added to this, and I'm willing to just listen to what you have to say, Director Turner.
Muriya Turner, Community Development. The issue that we, or the option that I discussed with Supervisor Paeska would be a location limitation, creating a distance in between cannabis retailers. So I've seen this in other jurisdictions. Its purpose then is to sort of spread them out so you don't have as much of a heavy concentration in a single location. Currently, in C2, Community Commercial Zoning District, cannabis retailers, and this is, when I say retailer, I mean both adult and medicinal, so retailer slash dispensary. But in C2, cannabis retailers are use by right. And so there is no need for, there's no point where planning works with them on any sort of use permit or anything. And so adding, if the board supported adding a location limitation to sort of spread these out, then I would also recommend requiring a zoning permit. Because currently, it's a use by right. A zoning permit is also ministerial, and that would be the opportunity for the planning department to work with the applicants to just go through the list of criteria that are required to make sure that they're satisfying any sort of requirements prior to them moving in. But a zoning permit is not open to a public hearing. It's done at the staff level.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so now we can open it up for board discussion.
Thank you for bringing this. I've definitely gotten some comments from some of the folks who are hearing through the grapevine of potential retail cannabis stores coming into their neighborhoods. I agree with some sort of limitation. I don't know if it needs to be restricted to one area, because each area is going to create some type of issue, even if they're 1,000 feet apart or 2,000 feet apart. Like, I'd rather see two bars right next to each other than trying to figure out where to put two bars in two separate locations of the city to make sure it's appropriate. Maybe it's appropriate to have two cannabis stores next to each other, but not have more than five in the entire district or in the entire region. I would say we need a population divider, so that maybe one retail per 5,000, one per 3,000. I know that there is some numbers in the state, and I think we should look at that. That way, we don't end up with 20. We need to limit it so that we don't see that happening. I'd love to see that happen with other things, like tobacco, personally, myself. But I think we do need to figure out a way to limit it. I don't know if I agree with the zoning permit. I still think that's too low. I really don't like that one is a by-right use and another one is a major use, but why can't it just be a minor use? Can you tell me the difference between minor use and a zoning permit? I think the public should be able to provide comments and that we go through the minor use process. I think major use is a little too strong, but a by-right is, I think that that's created the, part of the reason for this conversation.
Certainly. The difference between a zoning permit and a minor use permit lies mostly in review. A zoning permit might be sent out to a few different departments for their review, but a minor is sent out to a larger number. The reason for that is that the different departments will return with a list of recommendations and requirements, and so, in a minor use permit. That then becomes our draft conditions of approval. The minor use permit is subject to a public hearing. It doesn't always go through a public hearing. The way we have it set up right now is that we send out the notice to the papers and to the neighbors, according to the government code, saying that we will not hold a public hearing unless there is a written request by a certain date. And so if nobody requests it, we don't hold the hearing, we just count it as approved. So that's the difference between a zoning permit, which is an over-the-counter, and a minor use permit. So the minor use permit does allow for that public input.
Yeah.
And it is a discretionary use permit versus ministerial.
Correct. And I would prefer it be at that level. Two final comments. One, there are rules that have changed at the state level. I could be incorrect, but I could have sworn that they got rid of the 1,000-foot setback from schools and parks. So obviously, I want to make sure that those are in place, because we have zero rules whatsoever underneath our cannabis retail. It was a surprise for me. I represent District 2, so I know that I'm not going to see any changes in my area, because it's all within the city. It's not going to happen in the middle of Highway 20, in the middle of nowhere. But there are no rules of setbacks. There are no rules of security. Everything is state-based rules that we're following, and the state's changing a lot of its rules. So if those rules are disappearing, I want to make sure that some of those rules come into play here locally, because we do need to ensure that the setbacks are appropriate so that they're located in the right locations. And I forgot what my final comment was.
I agree with that, and I think one of the locations in Kelseyville is very close to a park, so I think you could be right on that. And, but you, your first point was, rather than looking at buffer zones, limiting the number per district or per area. And that is a discussion that I had with Director Turner, and so do you want to share your thoughts on that?
Certainly. Years ago, the board did establish a certain number of dispensaries per district. That was later rescinded by the board due to public outcry. Setting a certain number of any allowed use is problematic for staff, because the last thing that we want to do is make the county look arbitrary in its decisions. And so let's say we get five applications for one area that's only allowed a single permit. We have to have some way of deciding which application is going to succeed, which isn't always, you know, if it's a first-come, first-served, then we have the issue that the public could say, well, staff wasn't working on thy project fast enough. Otherwise, I would have been first. Or staff prefers that other guy, and so they did that other guy first. So it's just, it's a much more challenging process to work on that permit in the department. It's also almost impossible to do things randomly, which is what we also thought about doing back then. So anyway, yeah, for a variety of reasons, that's, that wasn't my preferred option when I was talking to Supervisor Paeska.
And while I can understand that that could create tension, especially if there's a lot of applications, I know, I can provide an example that in the city of Clear Lake, you get what you get. You have three maximum retail stores. They've added delivery-only, where it's not a walk-in, where the public has access to it. But it is what it is, and there's not been a problem because of that. So I think it's possible. And that was my last comment, and I apologize for jumping in, but I think we need to look at delivery-only, because I think there's been some situations where that would have been appropriate, rather than just retail where people walk in.
Yeah, so the item is brought as consideration of direction to kick this to the task force, and...
Well, it's to give direction to staff, who will then work with the task force.
I guess my understanding of the task force's role may be a little broader. I mean, I'm totally supportive of kicking this to task force to get their input and some ideas. A little uncomfortable prescribing what some of those ideas might be at this point. I'm like probably most people, I was a little mystified to hear we had by-right in C2 and major use permits in C3. Having said that, the prior board voted on that ordinance and approved it. I'm a little reticent to second-guess the wisdom of that board, even though it was a surprising decision. Now that the word is getting out, the C2 by-right is a thing. I think you are seeing more of these stores popping up, and I think there may be some self-limiting factors that come into play, just as there was in the city of Lakeport when I was there. There's only so many parcels that would be zoned appropriately for that. And it's almost like we're 2014 again, where we're seeing that when everyone was a medical marijuana collective, and various cities and counties were playing whack-a-mole with those types of businesses. If there's any type of move to restrict this, I'm a little concerned that it's going to be open season on C2, and just like it was when it was whack-a-mole with medical marijuana dispensaries. On occasion, you have to think about uncomfortable things like moratoriums and stuff like that. And it may well come to that, if that's the consensus, is we're going to look for ways to limit this. I would caution that we may need to consider something like a moratorium to prevent further expansion, but I don't know how that would work. Setbacks from schools, buffers between businesses, all that stuff within a ministerial context sounds fine. Numerical caps within districts, seen that all over the state, very problematic, forces you to do ranking criteria among applicants. I think the free market has the biggest role in that, and I don't think we should be trying to limit that stuff. So I'm okay with sending it to the task force, basically to look at zoning permit-level-type restrictions that may put setbacks between similar businesses, that may apply a setback to a school or a park. But I wouldn't want to go above and beyond that to look at caps, if only because, again, our cultivators are in trouble. We do have Measure K. The voters did vote to start scraping some money and get it into the county coffers for these retail operations. They've been slow in coming. I'd love to see some good projects come forward. I'd love to see some things like signage discussed as well as part of that zoning permit. But I would just basically support kicking it to the task force to get their input. There's going to be some good industry input on that that I think will be valuable. And then I'd like to hear the recommendations of the task force before we lock down any specific direction at the board level. Thank you.
So for the zoning permit, wouldn't that have development and design standards, Director Turner?
Development and design standards are implemented through a development review or a design review permit, which gets triggered typically if there is an expansion of the footprint of the business or a significant alteration in the facade. So not necessarily.
Just, for a quick clarification, I didn't say, maybe I said it, but I didn't mean it to sound that way. I don't think a limitation per district makes sense when some districts are tiny and some districts are much larger, but by population to limit the number of retail stores, because, again, it makes no sense to have 20 of these in Lake County. It needs to be limited to what actually would work and function, so that we don't see a huge increase of things we don't need.
Is that, and I don't know about the state regulations either, but is that something that is already in place with the state?
No, there's a number that some communities use, and I think it's either 5,000 or 4,000 every, or every 4,000, you can have one dispensary or something like that. But I think that's up to us.
The state regulations do address excessive concentration. Similar to liquor licenses, I think where this is all going to head eventually is there won't be any local license attached, just as there isn't with the liquor store. But if there is a liquor license, like our wine bar near the playground in Lake Library Park, occasionally, there may be a hearing for findings of convenience or necessity for that business. And even those hearings can be fun. So I think the general state rule is avoid excessive concentration. There is a process where we could do that, but it isn't really locked in well at either the state or local level, to my knowledge.
Supervisor Simon?
Obviously...
Vice Chair Simon?
Thank you. And congratulations, Chair Paeska. Yeah, I think it's a good conversation, obviously. Looking at the unincorporated areas in Lake County, we have an industry we're looking to support. So we do know that the retail portion is something that we've got to continue working on. So, you know, hopefully, too, in the conversations that we're having, I know our neighbors, Mendocino, have kind of embraced the cannabis tourism part of it, not just the retail, but other businesses that may open up to bring in that opportunity with this new industry. So, yeah, I'm in supportive of going back to the board. Whether or not we come up with some numbered regulation on population, I think that's a good discussion to have as we move through that process. And we slowly but surely have some coming online. I'm not sure how many are in the pipe right now, heard rumors, but don't know for sure. But I know there's still one that's being opened up, or that has been improved in Lower Lake that has not opened up yet in that area. So obviously, that's my district, very close to home. So, you know, continue this process, but I agree with getting it back to the Cannabis Task Force and seeing what options come back to us as a board. Sounds like there's a lot of good conversations going on. But looking at the state level, like we said, over the next five, six years, and we've been in it about five years now, you know, things are constantly changing, so appreciate the conversation and be available for any meetings that happen. Setbacks are very important. We had a lot of discussions. I was involved with that. So the 1,000-foot setback to the schools, other things, very important. That stays near and dear to my heart. I think that is, if there's opportunities, then we need to take advantage of those in the right spot. But keeping these as far away from the schools is very important. Schools, churches, daycares, you know, some of the other terms that were put in there are very important.
Supervisor Crandall?
I agree with the consensus, and I think it's important to have this done, because, as you noticed, in my district, you know, I have two, I think, right now. And one of the bases on, from the public was the fact that it was near a school bus and things of that nature. So I think it would be a good thing to allow them to look at it, but there's a lot of opposition at times in my district when it comes to this, but it's gone through, and I... and I would like to see a little more, you know, legislation that assists with that, so.
Okay. Yes.
One other thing, too. And Maria, thank you for bringing it up, too. You know, there is no guaranteed right in any business. If you're notified, I've gone through the process, as Maria had talked about, where a business was going to be put in our local area prior to me being on the board. They wanted to set up some food trucks down near some businesses in downtown. So when the area plan went through that process, we did, you know, I myself, put in a complaint, said, hey, I want to have a meeting about this. I got a concern. Now food trucks are a little more prevalent than they were at that time. But had an opportunity as a community member to say, hey, yeah, I think we need to have a hearing on this, and I've got other folks. And so, continue to get that message out there that, you know, if you get a notice, please respond to it, if you have a concern about it, and it could open up some other opportunities for you and other concerned members. So what is that process called specifically?
Discretionary.
Thank you very much. All right. Just wanted to make sure we get that out there.
Supervisor Spatier?
Just a final comment. I know that we've put the Cannabis Task Force to task on the dry sheds and hoop houses and things like that. Would this be the next subject matter that they take on? Or are we asking to kind of sneak in and bring it back to us faster?
I wouldn't want to derail the work that's in progress. This would be the next item.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
I don't know if you want to speak on how far along you are.
If the board says this is their next priority, this will be their next priority.
Are you finished with the?
Not yet. We do have a subcommittee with a member of the cannabis industry, the fire chiefs, and Farm Bureau. They're all working on their own report, which will be alternative recommendations to the agricultural structure ordinance. That will then, we anticipate, that will be covered at the next task force meeting, which is two weeks from yesterday.
Okay.
And after that, then that moves on, and the task force would be available to consider this item, should the board request that of them.
We wouldn't want you to have any idle time.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a question, and whether we can include this in the referral to the task force. Again, I think some of us are mystified how this actually arrived in the first place. So either it was genius three years ago, or whenever this ordinance passed to allow it by right, or it was a big, bad boo-boo, or something in between. So the only thing, I definitely, we're going to take it to the task force, but I hope we don't fully reinvent the wheel. I hope we will take occasion to revisit the original drafting of the ordinance, the comments that were made by our then-board members and our then-planning commissioners, because, you know, this didn't, you know, there's a paper trail here. So I'd like us to at least take a small journey back down that paper trail to see where we've been, so that we can be duly informed about where we want to go next, if that's fair.
Okay, so we'll open it up to the public. Do we have comments in the board chambers, or we do have a comment in the board chamber? Say your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Sharon Zoller. I live in Kelseyville. My question, first of all, I think this is an excellent discussion. My question is of a historic nature. In 2011, the Board of Supervisors at that time, in December, passed an ordinance to eliminate all dispensaries in the county. This was a grassroots operation, came from group all around the county. And at that time, after the ordinance was passed, the existing dispensaries were closed down, and at that time, there were none in the incorporated parts of the county. So the supervisors at that time were Comstock, Smith, Rushing, Farrington, and Brown. Obviously, they're no longer supervisors. Actually, the only person who's still in county government who was at that time is Anita Grant. So I don't expect an answer. I'm just wondering, I don't recall that that ordinance had a sunset, and, you know, a decade has passed since then, so a zillion things have happened. My wonderment is, is that ordinance still in effect? That has maybe fallen off the table, and I don't know that, and I don't expect Ms. Turner to give me an answer right now. Turn your page, and please give me an answer. But it's just a question. Is that ordinance still into effect? Was it superseded by something else? It's a wonderment, just a question. And I don't expect an answer.
Do you have a response?
I do.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
You are correct.
And I totally defer to Anita to correct me if I'm wrong. My memory was that, since we have a prohibitive ordinance, zoning ordinance, it means that if it doesn't allow for a use in the ordinance, it's not allowed. So the board created a, or did an ordinance that would allow a certain number of dispensaries per supervisor or district. The public outcry on that was the intention to referendum, that ordinance. And so it came back to the board at that point, that they could either send it to the ballot to have the voters decide, or they could rescind the ordinance. They rescinded the ordinance, which then brought us back to zero. So it's different than a moratorium, but it went back to not having any allowance for dispensaries or retailers at that time. So then, when the board came back and created the regulatory structure that would allow for retailers and dispensaries, that's when they, it came back. That's when the ordinance then again allowed dispensary retail licenses within the county. That's my understanding. But Anita would probably know better than me.
That does sound correct, but I'm a lawyer, so I'm going to double-check all of it to make sure that that's accurate. Maria is absolutely correct. However, the county has always gone by the precept that if something is not allowed in the county's zoning ordinance, it is prohibited. That's not an unusual posture. Many jurisdictions take it. And if the county was at a point where facing a possible referendum, it determined to rescind the ordinance, which is certainly one of the choices that the board could have made, then anything that comes along subsequent to that, that would regulate something that hadn't been previously allowed, would be the order of the day, and it would be pursuant to those regulations. But as I said, just out of an abundance of caution, I'll check the timeframe to make sure, because, while it's my recollection, it's only that.
Okay. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. And, you know, things change so quickly, and I appreciate having that background. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in the board chambers? Okay, seeing now, we'll go to Zoom room.
Aaron McCarrick.
Aaron McCarrick.
Hello, board. This is Aaron McCarrick in Clear Lake. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this item up. And I know that the issue at hand with this agenda item is if it should be pushed to staff to then take to the task force. So on that, I definitely agree with that. I think the task force is a good venue to discuss the revision of the cannabis ordinance, as well as, in general, other cannabis regulations and guidelines. It is a public forum, so people can certainly give comments when each of them come up. And thank you to the CDD and Director Turner for pushing through some time-sensitive issues, like the dry structures and the cultivation hoop houses that the state has allowed, that the county has to get in line with those regulations. So in regard to a couple of things in terms of it going to the task force and the priority, I would say that, again, it's obviously the direction of the CDD, but there are some time-sensitive things, like getting in line with the state regulations, making sure the county is aligned with those. There's no discrepancies, just as the hoop houses are doing, as well as any time-sensitive cultivation things. And with the dispensary issue, it might be helpful to get our current dispenser, give our current dispensaries a lot of guidelines and parameters, such as onsite consumption, lounges, things like that. So it's not like we're, you know, creating more regulations without dealing with some of the gaps right now. That's just my feedback from being in the industry. And I would also like to encourage any companies that have gone through the discretionary permit application, either in downtown Kelseyville or in elsewhere, and have also gone through the state process, if they could maybe be grandfathered, because it's a lot of time and money to put into that, and they didn't have any regulations or guidelines to go by. So they were just going by what they knew, which was to get a discretionary permit and apply for the state permit or license, and go through that. It is also maybe interesting to note, if there's a way to align it with current liquor licenses, such as, I know in downtown Kelseyville, there's at least seven places to get wine, beer, or liquor as you're walking down the street. And some people don't prefer to do that. And some people prefer just the wellness factor of the cannabis plant. So thank you so much for taking this up. Again, I support being sent to the task force, and look forward to joining them on public meetings.
Great. Thank you. And the intent is to, the current dispensaries are grandfathered, and there's nothing we can really do to change that.
They would be considered illegal, non-conforming use.
Yes. Okay.
Richard Durham?
Richard Durham?
(phone rings)
Oops.
Richard Durham, one time, thank you. On the density part of the dispensaries, I don't think it's a bad idea to have dispensaries one down the road from the other, as a lot of retail shops actually conglomerate, so that when the shoppers come, they can go from one store to another. So I don't think it would actually detract from the purchases of either store, and it may actually enhance and drive traffic to them, because they could shop both stores at the same time without driving across the county. That's all I have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, so that looks like we're, any other public comment? Last call in the board chambers? That's it? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board and close public comment.
Jennifer Smith popped her in.
Oh. Okay.
Just popped up.
All right, we'll open it back up. And Jennifer Smith?
Sorry about that. I was expecting more comments. Jennifer Smith, I welcome this coming to the task force. One of the things that's a priority is opening up the discussion, overall discussion on zoning, as well as all the license types that we don't currently offer, and seeing what's available, onsite consumption, some of the tourism. And I think now would be the good time, if we're going to open up all those license types, basically what we refer to as a facilities ordinance, it would be a good time to review retail and make sure that we're in alignment with state. And as the overall goal in the task force is to align with the state and take a lot of the burden off of the local jurisdiction, we're hopeful that there's some good guidance relating to retail as well. So welcome the opportunity to take this to the task force. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public input and bring it back to the board for discussion and figure out the direction for CDD. Supervisor Spatier?
I just wanted to comment on a statement made by Aaron McCarrick. There are a lot of changes that are happening as of this January 1st, from state updates to their rules and regulations for cannabis. But I think, I think there's a glaring hole with the by-right use permit. And I'm glad that we're bringing it up, and I think we need to close that loop as quickly as possible before we have things happening that were unexpected when it was originally approved. So I think it needs to remain a priority. There are a lot of other things, but I think that we need to focus.
So keep a tight focus on this. I think so, too. There are other priorities. If we keep a tight focus on this, maybe we can move it through quickly and bring it back soon. Are there any other?
The priority between the temporary structures and this, was the goal to bump this ahead of temporary structures?
No.
To take it next in line?
Yes.
Then it's more a question, just based on the activity we've seen, two in his district, couple popping up. We just rejected an appeal that would have been in a rezone C3. If the concern is these are popping up sooner than later, and if the word is going to get out that this is going to get kicked to the task force, and there may be something happening six months to a year from now, based on past experience with the old medical marijuana dispensaries of old in multiple jurisdictions, what you can see happen is when there's a discussion to tighten things up, you'll actually see a flurry of activity forward. So if the concern is that these are getting out of control too fast, too soon, in addition to this, you may want to consider bringing back an item at a future meeting for a moratorium on new dispensaries until we figure this stuff out. We can't really tackle that today, and that's a whole separate discussion. But I do think that may be an unanticipated consequence if we provide this direction today, is it's actually going to possibly have some consequences that haven't been thought about. And if we do see that type of uptick in activity, and again, how would we know? Nobody's dropping applications on these. They're just gobbling up C2 properties at this point. It may be something you want to consider. So I'm just letting the cosponsors of this know that this is certainly a positive step, and going to support this moving forward, and having the task force take diligent steps toward really crafting what the future is. But there may be another step that you may want to consider in the short term at a future meeting. So I just want to share that as a possibility. Thank you.
Reopen public comment. We have somebody in the chambers. Do you want to come up and
Joan Moss. I would like to know where the dispensaries that have already been voted on stand. I understand that you voted no against the dispensary near Lower Lake. So what happens if the task force comes back? Is that still no? Or can this woman appeal and go back? Thank you. I don't know about the zoning.
That was for a zone change. Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, that, that one was for a rezoning. I think it needed a general plan amendment as well, to change a single parcel from C3, which is service commercial, into C2, which is community commercial, creating a spot zoning issue. And the board denied the appeal.
Yeah, so that was a zone change.
Upheld the appeal, overturning the decision of the planning commissioner.
Right. Okay. So I know you have a lot of notes from what we've said.
If I might be able to sort of see if I'm on the right track.
Yes.
There are two issues that we're talking about. First is the by-right versus discretionary use permit for retail. This is all specific to retail. And then the second one is regulating concentration. So a few of the different options that have come up would be a proportionate number based on population. And I'm not sure if you mean population of community, which is a little harder to sort of solidify versus supervisorial district, which might be easier because that's a known boundary. Secondly, or otherwise, a location limitation, which would be a spacing between dispensaries or retails, or if there are any other options that the task force might bring to the table.
And we want to make sure that we've got the setbacks in case they have.
I sort of took that as a side research.
Yes.
Yeah. That's not something that I think the task force would speak to yet.
Okay.
Because the, yeah, I'm pretty sure that the state's setbacks were 600 feet, and ours were 1,000 when they were first instilled. So I'm going to go back and double-check to make sure that those are not, that those are still set.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to let the board know at a future meeting.
I don't believe we have a setback on ours. I know it's blank. It just says retail cannabis. And then there's no specifics underneath. And then there's no specifics underneath it.
And I will definitely do a deep dive on that one and get right back to you. So many things changed in the three years that have gone.
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, the first part, time, place, and manner restrictions, that's just garden variety stuff. Totally, and I think there's consensus, if I'm just counting people, totally supportive of that. Not as enthused about numerical limits, but I'll let the task force chew on that. So if that's the direction, as we kick that issue to the task force, that's okay too. But just based on other communities again, and some of the challenges of ranking and stuff like that, if we're going to permit it all, the idea that we're going to somehow micromanage the cannabis economy through a limitation on the number of locations based on any criteria is probably going to be problematic. But if we're kicking it to the task force anyway, I don't want to limit those discussions. But the thing I'm looking for their guidance on most of all is time, place, and manner restrictions, not so much numerical caps on the number of businesses.
I have a process question for the board once you get to that. We're still clarifying the topics, so.
Is there anything else to add on the topics? Okay.
To date, land use issues will go to the cannabis task force.
Yes.
Now, the ag advisory board, but I think that might just be for cultivation. And then the planning commission before it comes back to the board. Would you like, we're only, we've only been speaking today about getting input from the cannabis task force. Would you like me to also take those recommendations from the task force to the planning commission before I come back to you? Or would you like me to skip planning commission, which I actually don't recommend, and then come straight back?
Supervisor Spatier?
I would say we're discussing land use. They are the body that makes decisions for land use and that we should definitely go through that. I don't see a reason to go through the ag advisory, especially since we have ag on the cannabis task force. And either way, the final decision still lays within our ability to make those decisions. It would only be comments, and they can bring those public comments either at the task force level, at the planning commission level, or at the board of supervisors level. So I don't know that a retail license needs to go through all of the above. And I'm glad the fire districts are on the task force because retail does require safety measures and they'll provide their input on that.
The only nuance I would add to that is depending what the task force says, retail can incorporate both storefront retail and when they talk about cannabis tourism, they're often talking about microbusinesses and the ability to do retail out in the farmlands. That's an evolving business model. But if the task force, for example, kind of tries to tackle storefront retail and microbusiness, public-facing retail operations in the same fell swoop, that may end up wanting to go to ag advisory because that would involve retail operations out in the countryside more so than our population centers. So it gets a little nuanced, but I totally agree. I mean, for storefront retail, it's pretty slam dunk. I wouldn't see that going to ag advisory. But if we branch out into a broader discussion on basically farm direct marketing and microbusiness retail, then we may at some point in the future want to loop in ag advisory. Not at that point yet. Let's see where the task force takes us on that.
Okay. Any other comments?
If I could just determine if there is consensus to branch out into microbusiness, because I would prefer to keep microbusiness with a holistic evaluation on the task force and stick to retail right now.
Yes.
If that's.
If you just call it storefront retail, I think that would be the clarification you're looking at, yeah.
Huber, thanks.
And I would say retail, just in general, period, not microbusiness. Stick with the retail license. And the retail license can be delivery or it can be storefront. I know that that was brought up, but I think the retail license specifically allows for specific types, and that's not microbusiness.
And then lastly, if I could just get a consensus on timeline so that I can adjust my calendar accordingly. When would you like to see this back?
Stay away from that one.
Me too. Well, I feel like it is an urgent matter, but you have another priority in front of you. So as it, as quickly as it can move through your schedule, but we are not giving you a time constraint.
Work with that. Thank you.
All right.
How long is left with the other, how long do you anticipate the other?
Dry shed.
Yeah, how long do you anticipate that taking?
The task force was very receptive to entertaining the report from the subcommittee. And so I do anticipate that we could get the structure ordinance done at our next meeting. So long as that subcommittee is able to hammer out a final report for us. We were anticipating doing it yesterday, but you know, we had this flood and people have been sick. And so unfortunately, this was our, we had to cancel yesterday's meeting. But they're all going to be ready to pick it up again in two weeks.
Supervisor Spatier?
So there's no data that was provided today. Do you have an idea of how many approved or applications you have received? Just because if the, we're hearing it's urgent, I'm not going to deny that the by-right issue creates that urgency. But at the same time, I think that a good point was made that if it takes too long, maybe looking at a moratorium. So I just, I don't want to set a timeline where you're rushed to bring something back to us, but maybe there needs to be, we need to look at something in the interim. So I would say communicate with the sponsors so that they can make the decision on whether to bring something in the interim or not. Just because I want to make sure we do the right thing with the changes that need to be made.
Sure. I just sent out a lifeline to staff upstairs. They should get me a definite number on that one. They had, they gave me a sheet already and it's upstairs. But also one thing while they're looking at that and getting back to me, it's important to note that we don't always know really about the ones in C2 because they're not coming to planning. I know of one that was just assigned, no, two, one in Kit's Corner, one, I can't remember where the other one was, but they come in for maybe a sign permit or something like that. So there we go. Two approved, major use, one operative, one design review approved. So we're at three? I thought we were at four, but I can also get a final number for you too. But that doesn't detract, it doesn't take away from where this board has sort of focused on today, which was the by-right use in C2.
Does, do our good friends at DCC share information to the point that they would not necessarily share all the contents of a pending retail application, but they could tell us that they exist, that they have received X amount of retail applications in the county?
I think we can get that information for you, yes.
I think that may be useful as we, as we determine what, you know, whether an interim step is needed. That would be a good number.
Because just buying up a storefront in C2 is not the same as actually having a license to operate with the state in order to establish a retail. You're just kind of a store owner.
Right. Okay, so yeah, we'll get that information from you when you receive it and figure out our next steps if we have to go that route.
Certainly. So I'm going to research the, we're going to do a comparison of what's still in place regarding regulations for retail and the definite number of retail that we know of. I would be happy to send that to Susan for distribution to the board.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, yeah, break. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We will take a five-minute break. Well, a six-minute break. We'll come back at 10:45. Thanks. Okay, welcome back. We will be moving on to 7.3 with behavioral health. And there is Director Metcalf.
Yes, getting ready for a vacation. So I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I do have staff there in the chambers that can help me out. But good morning, Madam Chair. Congratulations on your appointment and members of the board. So this item is basically an information-only item. We're circling back to this because we want to explain and outline how the payment reimbursement process will work with New Life Clinic and its substance use disorder services that are being provided to our clients. As we've mentioned before, New Life has been able to serve more of our folks than we have ever been able to serve before because of New Life Clinic's proximity to Lake County. They are located in Ukiah, which substantially lessens travel time for our clients having to go to other clinics such as in Santa Rosa or Marysville. And it gives them a much better opportunity to avail themselves of the substance use disorder services provided by New Life Clinic. And I heard Supervisor Spatier's comment earlier about the need for more substance use disorder services and mental health services. And so New Life is really helping us, at least with the substance use disorder services side of things. And so I, at this point, I would like to turn this over to our subject matter experts at New Life and staff who is there on hand. And thank you, Christine and April for being there. Who wants to go first? And don't all talk at once. I don't know if I see Jennifer. I believe Jennifer Kent from New Life Clinic was going to join us.
There she is.
There she is. Hi, Jennifer. Thanks for making the time for this.
Of course. Happy to join. Thank you so much for asking me to. Would you like me to just very quickly for the board, explain how the reimbursement process would work? Would that, would that be best?
Yes, because, yeah, we've touched on this before and there was a little concern and confusion about how it worked, but I think we got it all shored up. But if you could, if you could walk us through it or walk them through it, that would be awesome.
Sure. I'll use my, my secret Medi-Cal decoder ring.
Love it.
So in essence, when Medi-Cal patients go into the clinic and present their Medi-Cal card, the clinic will be providing them services. And to Director Metcalf's comment, the clinic has started offering mental health services in addition to narcotic treatment services. And so in some cases, patients are receiving both a mental health visit as well as a substance use disorder visit. Those encounters by the clinic are then documented. They are submitted to the county. Their aid code status as a Medi-Cal beneficiary is also tracked because, for instance, if a beneficiary is a, what we would call a classic Medi-Cal beneficiary, meaning 50% of the costs are borne by the state and 50% are borne by the federal government, those aid codes are important because at the end of the month, the tribe will add up all of the non-federal share components, which in this case are Lake County's responsibility, right? Lake County is responsible for 50% of those costs instead of the state. And they will submit that documentation to the county and they will submit a check in the amount of the non-federal share that that, that those claims are responsible for. Lake County will then go through, make sure that those claims are appropriate, do the regular processing that they should do in the normal course of their administrative responsibilities. They will in turn certify those claims and send those claims to the state, to the Department of Healthcare Services, who will then do its job in terms of processing those claims. They submit those claims to the federal government, and this is all done electronically at this point. And they will draw down those matching federal funds that those claims match. And they will submit that money back to the county. And then the county will in turn reimburse the tribe for both the encounter as well as the non-federal share that the tribe put up. And so in essence, Lake County no longer has a cost associated with these claims. The tribe, because they are also a governmental entity, are putting up the non-federal share. And so that is what allows this kind of funding mechanism to go forward. And that has been approved by the state and acknowledged.
Thank you, Jennifer. So again, this is, this is an information-only presentation. We're not asking really for the board, I believe the board doesn't have to approve anything here. We're just giving an update on New Life Clinics and how we are going to work through the reimbursement process. So are there any questions from the board?
Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. So within the letter that we received, and thank you for sharing the letter with me earlier. I know I had lots of questions when we went through the contract process. So I've seen this letter. I believe even Jennifer may have sent it to me directly. I forget who it was that sent it to me. But it says in there, "So long as appropriate safeguards are in place to ensure that all federal requirements at Subpart B of 42 CFR Part 433 have been met." And so when I look it up, I'm not even going to try to say that I understand everything that it prescribes on what needs to be followed. I'm not sure what we need to follow. I'm not sure what the state needs to follow because they talk a lot about state in there. But it says state funds will be used to pay at least 40%. And you talked about the 50-50 exchange. So at this moment in time, the state is funding 50%?
No. No. So that CFR is in reference to a state's Medicaid program in its entirety, not on a claim-byclaim or a program-by-benefit basis. So in California, as you know, counties and the state have done two realignment deals, 1991 realignment and 2011 realignment. In those consequential negotiations between the counties and the state, and most notably in 2011, the state, in putting money into counties' behavioral health realignment accounts, counties accepted responsibility for funding the behavioral health costs of the Medicaid program. And so whereas the state is required to put at least 40% of the non-federal share into its Medicaid program broadly writ, they are not required to put 40% into a specific part of the program. And so we in California use not only state general fund, but we use your county behavioral health funds. We use provider taxes, such as there's a hospital tax, there's a nursing home tax. And we use other funds to draw down federal dollars like MHSA and local government taxes. And then these tribal dollars obviously count as part of the appropriate tax dollars that can draw federal funds.
And I had a feeling that it was speaking more about the state broadly rather than specifically about one small program, especially when looking at code like this. And just to check, I'll ask a question that I feel, I know it's somewhat rhetorical, but based on the letter saying, "As long as you meet these requirements," and I'm asking both New Life as well as Behavioral Health, you both feel that those requirements are being taken care of and that we're good to go with moving forward?
Well, what I'll, what I'll say is, is obviously, since I used to work at the department and oversaw the program, I'm incredibly sensitive to audits and withholds. And so we are working on a process with the staff to make sure that the documentation, both from the clinic as well as the documentation at the county level, are such that it would be absolutely defensible in a subsequent audit, right? Because audits are going to happen no matter what. And that more importantly, the tribe has to attest, when they send funds to the county, that they are allowable funds, meaning that they are that they are allowable funds, meaning that they are funds that the tribe controls that are not otherwise federal funds, right? You can't use federal funds to match federal funds, and you can't use funds that are being matched in a different purpose. And so, the tribe has an onus on it that when they send a check to the county, they are essentially attesting that the funds are appropriate to that federal regulation that you cite. That's a very important part of that larger regulation, and we're putting a lot of things in place to make sure that that is all done appropriately.
I appreciate that, and don't mean to patronize, but the answer is yes. You're doing your best to make sure that we are staying within the requirements that they speak of, and asking the same for Behavioral Health.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Both sides.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And then, my last question is, on here, it says, and I don't even know where the sentence begins, so I'll start it. "The Department of Healthcare Services is aware that Lake County Behavioral Health has entered into a contract with an Indian healthcare provider to provide drug Medi-Cal narcotic treatment program services to Lake County Medi-Cal beneficiaries." Sorry, next sentence. "Lake County Behavioral Health is paying the IHCP, the Office Management and Budget All-Inclusive Rate, which is more than the ATP rate established by DHCS. What's the difference between those two rates?"
So, they're pretty significant. The Office of Management and Budget rate for tribal 638 clinics nationally is set at $617, I believe, in the current year. So, it's set by the federal government. I believe it's 617. And then, the narcotic treatment rate in the Medi-Cal program, it's broken into different pieces, but I think the fee-for-service rate is maybe $40, $42 for daily methadone dosing.
So, we're looking at potential...
It's like $16.20, I believe.
Yeah, I thought it was a low...
Yeah, it's pretty low.
I had it at 17.
There's a couple components, if you add counseling in and dispensing. It depends, but yes.
And I appreciate it. I'd like to see more apples-to-apples rather than apples-to-oranges when seeing the difference. But that's still a difference of at least more than $500, close to $600 of a difference. And it's just something that I want to remain cognizant. I'm sensitive to, no matter whose tax dollars we're using, that we're making sure to use them in the most efficient manner. And so, I know that we're saying that New Life is close. I disagree. I think they are one of the close agencies that we can work with, and I hope that we're reaching out to the others that are in Santa Rosa, which are closer to South Shore and closer to other areas. And Marysville might even be closer to Clear Lake Oaks or Spring Valley. And so, making sure that we're utilizing all that we can to make sure we use the tax dollars efficiently that are available for these types of services. So, I don't want to deny the service, but I want to make sure that we're cognizant that this is a drastic difference in the amount per person, per day, that we're spending. And I hope that we can continue the outreach to the other agencies. So, I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Spatia, absolutely. The only reason I pointed it out is because since we've started working with New Life Clinic, we have seen a dramatic increase in utilization, and folks are getting access to services that they need. But no, by no means, we're not discounting any of the other organizations that surround us. So, just wanted to point that out.
Any other questions?
I see Elise has her hand up.
It's cold in here, so apologies. I just wanted to also highlight that, as regards outreach and collaboration with other narcotic treatment program providers, this is a discussion that runs parallel to our hopeful entry into the organized delivery system. And you may recall, and rest assured if you don't, we will be presenting soon, actually, on an update for the organized delivery system and Lake County's entry into that system. But the organized delivery system, similarly to the specialty mental health program, requires time and distance standards, which means that you have to provide levels of care. And for substance use disorder programs, those levels of care are defined by ASAM, which is the Society of Addiction Medicine. And they delineate and describe all of the various levels of care, of course, NTP being one of them. And the requirement is that you must provide access that is within both time, how long it takes to get there, and distance, how long it takes to travel there, or how far standard. So, certainly, our attention to providing distance or access to NTP services that meet the criteria of those time and distance standards will require the continued collaboration with other NTP and all NTP providers, including any NTP providers that may want to set up shop in Lake County, which certainly we hope that they do. So, that's just another consideration and another safeguard, ensuring equitable access to these services. That's what I wanted to point out. Thank you.
And the ODS that you mentioned, is that the waiver 1115 that we went through the process for?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so, April Gambler, Lake County Behavioral Health Deputy Director. I just wanted to say, I wanted to highlight the fact that there is room for improvement with our collaboration with these other providers, regardless of whether or not they are a tribal 638 clinic. We have made valiant efforts in trying to bring NTP providers, methadone providers in our county, but where we have not, and will need to increase, is our collaboration. Now that we have this pathway laid before us, there's room for improvement. There most definitely is, with a series of providers, both in Marysville and Santa Rosa. So, I just want to acknowledge that we do have some room to grow there, and it is on our radar, for sure.
Thank you. I guess I have one final question. Do we have an idea of how many patients have gone through New Life in this fiscal year thus far? And I guess I'll just leave it at that.
In total, or from Lake County?
From Lake County.
I believe you were around 20 or 22 at last census.
And by this year, we're meaning 2023?
Like from July...
Since July 1.
Okay. And so, I believe that we were a little bit higher than that, and I should have... Yeah.
Did it?
Thank you.
Yeah, they... Some people, obviously, stopped coming, and then, the total census for the clinic overall is at 130, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Public input? Do we have anybody in the chambers or on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay. So, I'll close that and bring it back to the board. And this is... We don't have an action on this item. It's just a presentation. Okay.
Correct. Information only.
Okay. All right. If there's anything else, we'll close this and move on to Item 7.4, Consideration of the PLHA Loan Agreement, PLHA Deed of Trust, PLH Promissory Note, Regulatory Agreement, Loan Agreement with MHSA and HHAP and Deed of Trust, Promissory Note, Chase and the County Subordination Agreements, County and Sponsor Subordination Agreement, County DDS Subordination Agreement for the Colliers Avenue Housing Project.
Jessica, you did that so well. There were so many acronyms. Before we start, I will point out, PLHA, that's the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funds. HHAP is the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. And of course, MHSA stands for Mental Health Services Act. So, I'm very excited to bring this to the board. It's been a long time coming. I've been so excited to bring this to you all because you've heard me talk about this project for the last six years, and it's finally coming to fruition. I first really want to thank everyone involved in getting us to this point, Rural Communities, Housing Development Corporation, the CAO's office. And Susan, hats off to you because, boy, you worked so hard on this to dig up and dredge up where this project had been and been lost. So, I really want to thank you for your work on this. County Council, Ms. Grant, you were just extremely instrumental in helping us also move this project forward. Lake County Housing Commission, Linda Hedstrom, Paragon's LLC, Chase Bank, Housing Continuum of Care Staff, and of course, you, the Board of Supervisors, in getting us to this truly exciting moment. And I hope I didn't miss thanking anyone with that. But I, at this point, would like to perhaps turn this over to Elise Jones, our Administrative Deputy Director, if you have any more to say about this. I know this is a... There's a lot we asked you to read through, but this is... I'm just... I'm so excited to bring this to you. But Elise, I don't know if you have any more to add, and I think perhaps we have some other folks, perhaps waiting in the wings that want to say something.
We do. Thank you so much, and I echo those sentiments of gratitude. I do have, or we do have, Scott Abbott here, who oversees and supports the work of the Lake County Continuum of Care, and of course, they're involved in this whole Collier Avenue project. And so, I've asked Mr. Abbott to prepare a brief presentation and description of the history of this project. It's been going on so long that it didn't start with the current board sitting before us now, but it's ending with you all, which is exciting. And so, I want to make sure, so that everybody has a firm basis and framework of understanding for making a decision regarding this item, that they have the historical perspective of the project, including a description of the funding sources and how those are being leveraged to complete the project. So, with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Scott Abbott. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Good seeing you again. I think, you know, as our director mentioned, we've been talking about this project for quite a long time, and so, I know some of you are pretty familiar with the Collier Avenue in Nice project. Where it has kind of started, we have over in Lakeport, DeBevins Court Apartments, which are dedicated toward mental health clients who need housing. And that project, which was started back in 2000, it goes around '05, it's '03, somewhere between 2003 and '05, has proven to be very successful. It's 10 units that provide housing. We have a partnership with RCHDC with that in that our department recommends folks to be residents there, and they work in turn to help them get in there and become residents and do independent living through that. So, we really appreciate that quite a bit and wanted to try and replicate that, if possible. The Mental Health Services Act, which was developed in 2008 as a result of Proposition 63, did provide some one-time housing funds, recognizing that housing is a big issue for those with mental illness. And our portion that we received from that, including interest now, is $982,537.34. And so, we've had that amount in our savings for a dozen or more years, and we haven't utilized it yet to develop a project. We tried, there's a number of attempts over the years to try to do something with it, but none of them were realized. And so, we have those funds. And then, we have, in 2016, Governor Brown signed another piece of legislation that's called No Place Like Home. And that funding, which is also using Mental Health Services Act funds, and was subsequently approved by voters in 2018 to utilize that, was used for ongoing housing grants for counties to use. The first housing grant, which is an allocated grant, was for $557,845. And that is, which we have applied for and received. We went through stakeholder input of what those funds could be used for, and so, we have that funding. During that process, as I mentioned, the stakeholder process, we talked about building more apartments. And this kind of goes back to the Collier Avenue, which has even a longer history of existing and going back to the days of Redevelopment Agency and which was mentioned, that Susan Parker had to kind of ferret out how that existed until this point right now. But again, with that, with the No Place Like Home grants or the stakeholder process, it was decided that we would want to utilize that to try and build some housing. So, we issued an RFP as a result of that, and RCHD applied for that. They were the only one that actually applied. And to develop that into multiple apartment housing for our folks. And so, it came to looking at these 40 units. 20 of those would be used for mental health clients. Another 10 would be used for RCRC clients, rural communities, or Redwood communities.
Redwood Coast Regional Center.
Right, thank you. Sorry.
It's okay.
Too many acronyms.
Yeah.
For their clients. And then, 10 units would be for people that meet the income levels, that'd be eligible for those units. RCHDC does a magnificent job of taking funding and expanding it through tax credits into something that can, you know, build a unit like this. We've added more funding through, as Todd mentioned, the PLHA allocations, which we have. There's a five-year amount of money and funding, and we are using the first two years of that five years dedicated to this project. For a total of those two years is $600,000... And then, still another area of funding that we are using, which was discussed with the board last summer, is the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention HHAP Program, Round Three. Our county's allocation is $569,940. And of that, $473,050.13 is allocated toward this project. And that also went through a stakeholder project meeting through this board, along with our housing plan that also came with that. And so, all those funding sources together from the county, which is, again, MHSA, No Place Like Home, the first two years of PLHA, and then HHAP Round Three, totaled $2,615,901.47. And as I said, RCHD is able to take that funding and expand it to, for tax credits to be able to build this project. That's what I got.
Perfect. Yes, any questions? So, it was great. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. I forgot about some of that stuff we went through to get us to where we are today. Does the board have any questions? Does the Board have any questions? I'm sure someone does.
Is, is the presentation over or?
Um, just, thank you. That's a great question. Let me clarify. So that's just the background. And so I guess this is a, a multi-phased presentation, if you will. So we have that. I just wanted to set us on a level playing field of understanding the funding sources and the history of the project. But moving forward, I know that we have a representative from RCHDC. We have Beth here and perhaps one other person. And I didn't, I wasn't actually aware whether or not they wanted to present on anything specific, or if they simply just were here to help support fielding questions as regards the specificities of the documents presented to the Board today.
Well, we'll just echo on, you know, the appreciation of the Board and staff to put this project together. It's been years coming, and we aren't here just answering questions, you may have.
Thank you. So to answer your Board, I suppose that does conclude our formal presentation. And there's a lot before you, so we're happy to field any questions as regards this item.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I do want to add something to the history, that the reason that we have the property is because of the, uh, what's that board called?
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment Agency Board. The property was not purchased by the county. It is kind of owned at this moment in time by the, maybe I won't use the word owned, but it is in play due to the redevelopment funds that we have acquired through all of the other taxing agencies in the region, which includes the county, the water districts, the fire districts, any taxable entity that's part of the redevelopment. So this is not the county's property. It is kind of the county with a smaller C, not the big C. That, that is why that property is at play. So I just want to add that, that in there, because I think that makes a difference for my next comment. There, there's been no explanation about the non-recourse of the loan. That is kind of, to me, the elephant in the room. We're talking about, I, I know that the loan itself, the document says $600,000. The non-recourse pretty much means that we can take the property back, but if money is owed, that we may not even get a full property back. We are third or second on the loan document. And so a, a, all of that kind of puts me in an uncomfortable situation for the fact that it's not really our property. If we had purchased the property and we're playing with the risk to try and obtain something, that is a benefit to the community. I think the overall end project, there are benefits. But the fact that this is from all the other districts, I almost feel, I, I, I don't know that the Advisory Board and the last meeting that they had are in the knowledge that we would be signing a non-recourse loan, meaning that in the long run, they may not get their return on their investment, or even the return on anything potentially if things really go awry. So I'm, I, I almost feel like it needs to go through them first, in a sense. I don't know, I'm very, very uncomfortable with the non-recourse loan. I don't know if it's, I mean, to be honest, I, I question, why is this even there? Does it have to be there? Is this the way that RCHDC contracts? Is this a mandate from the state with using PLHA funds, that you have to have a non-recourse loan? Because again, being sensitive to taxing dollars that are being utilized to make this happen. Again, to a brief history, we did work with RCHDC to begin with, a, a long time ago when this all started. I think this was, what, 1992? It was a long time ago. $615,000 or $612,000 were utilized. We didn't get a project. We didn't get anything. Then we had to forgive those loans in order to clean the liens that were on the property in order to move forward. So we kind of gave away that amount. And now we're back with a non-recourse loan. And I just feel like, I feel like we've been on this rodeo before, and I'm very uncomfortable. So I'd like to get a little bit more information on how can we decrease our risk? Are we stuck with the template that we have on this contract? But we're risking someone else's money, not just ours. And even if it's ours, it's someone else's money's too. But I mean, these are fire districts and other districts that really would like to see the outcome that we all want to see, but the risk, it, it's, 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 I, I'm in an awkward position with a non-recourse loan. So I'll leave it at that.
I will just say that we have been working, or rather, County Council Ms. Grant has been working to provide clarification around that. And she may be in a position to provide some county legal perspective around that and the ramifications of a non-recourse loan as regards the county's interest.
County Council is not finance. And I've reviewed the documents and I've raised certain issues, but I don't believe that the admin finance people had an opportunity, I see Stephen Carter in the back, to review these documents. I don't know why, but, but I can point certain things out. A recourse loan is limited to the value of the collateral. You can't go beyond the value of the collateral. There are several subordination agreements here. Supervisor Sabatier is talking about not the Collier property, but redevelopment's interest in the Collier property, rather than ownership. And I think you corrected that. So, and then the issue of redevelopment, which relates to the orders that were made by the Oversight Board approving, moving forward with this, but expecting that the housing authority would have the right to essentially call a default and retrieve the property for a dollar. Now, there are certain conditions in the subordination agreement that may, agreements that may comp, complicate that. The truth is that, you know, your Board has approved these agreements in moving forward. So right now, you're, you're essentially looking at the details of all of this. And I don't know if Mr. Carter, who's sitting in the back, has any comments to make about the fiscal area, but I can tell you that the important thing that I would suggest for all of this is that you have someone with very good fiscal ability to act as a liaison in the course of this, to just monitor progress and to ensure that there are no issues or undue risks. Because in speaking to the financial people, which I did in regard to this project with RCHDC, the default is, the longer this moves forward, the less likely there's a default, which means success of the project. So to have a liaison who is fiscally astute and will see warnings, ask the right questions, is something I would recommend that you have on, on the project. So that may be a, a solution for you, just to ensure that if anything does happen, that you'll be informed early on. But I can tell you, the documents themselves are all in order from a legal perspective. The finance issues with a non-recourse loan do exist, but I would not be the person to give you the intricacies of all of that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board?
No, I obviously appreciate that suggestion of appointing somebody. And obviously, I would look to the CAO with any recommendations before we're done with this conversation.
Yeah.
Have an idea of what I'd say, but.
I agree. That was one of the things I was looking for, too. I also would like to see a map out of all the stakeholders and all the balances. There's a lot here in these documents. And everyone that's been giving the presentation has even had a hard time recalling the exact dollar amounts for each one. I, we're all looking forward to this project. This is important. This can be a game changer for our community. But I, there's a lot at stake, and I, I think we need to see more detailed information that we can review prior to the meeting. And I would also like county admin to have a chance to review the documents.
I think, too, I'm just wondering if, let's see here, on some of these agreements, it, it specifies and notes the Lake County Housing Commission. Do we need the other appointee here as well, as part of the Housing Commission?
You, you are able to sit as the Housing Commission, but the other member of the Commission should have been apprised of the need to meet today. If that didn't occur, then the Housing Commission's approvals would have to wait until the 24th. Your, you, your Board can go forward with county approvals today.
That was my question.
Just one, one quick question. I know that, again, we're looking at about $600,000 or whatever the number is here, 650, 600. You spoke, Mr. Abbott, about 2 million. Are all of those already approved, or is that upcoming approvals?
We, we have made that commitment with the, the funding that we've had. And I think there's going to be loan documents for those as well. Is that correct, Beth?
And so are we looking at the same type of agreement? Non-recourse for up to $2 million?
I believe Beth, if you have a comment on that?
Well, this is a typical way of, you know, funding these projects. We have worked with a number of other counties, City County, Mendocino County, Humboldt County. These are all, you know, loans that have gone through those counties with similar documents. And so just, I just want to, you know, provide that information. And we are on a serious timeframe here, so we'd like to try to address any concerns you may have this week.
It is really, really difficult to hear. I don't know if it's your microphone or, but it's, it's very echoey. It's very difficult. I think, I, I think I grasped what you said, though, that you do these types of contracts all the time. You've done it with other counties. This is typical. And so basically, I think that answers my other question, that this contract is basically the template, and that there's no room for negotiations on what I see before me.
Um, you know, technical, the technical advisor, legal counsel, is, I'm not sure we can let them into this discussion. That's appropriate.
We're looking for, is William DiCamillo in the waiting room? Could they be added as a panelist?
Yes, he's here.
Thank you.
What?
That's not what I'm smelling.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
The, the question about whether these are standard documents, the answer is, is yes, these are. As, as Beth had noted, these are incredibly similar to documents that other counties have used in similar transactions. And if, I, I don't want to take too much time talking about recourse versus non-recourse, but to the extent anybody wants your, my opinion on it, I, I, I don't think that's all that much of an issue, because that's really a worst-case scenario of the project is never built, and there's a foreclosure, and how much money is coming back to the county. I'm not going to say that has never happened, but it is exceptionally rare to happen in a low-income housing tax credit project, simply because there are so many safeguards in place to, to prevent a project not being built. So we have a conventional lender, we have an investor who needs this project built, and are going to make sure this project is built. In the 20-some years I've been practicing law, I've never seen a foreclosure in a affordable project. In the 50-some years my office has been around, we've never been involved in one. I think there has been nationwide a handful of foreclosures on affordable projects like this, but certainly not normal. So the, the fact that the, the loan is non-recourse would only be consequential if there was a foreclosure. Realistically, though, the county debt is junior to the conventional debt. So if you really wanted to sort of control what happens in a foreclosure, you would need to pay off that debt first, which would be a pretty expensive proposition. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Well, I, I, you've listened to the history of this project, so that's, I think you can appreciate why we're concerned.
Yep. Right, yep. And I was, I was involved in the, not the initial negotiation, but the renegotiation of the old debt. So I, but, but again, there, the project never started, in the sense, like, nobody ever put a shovel in the ground. Where now, so, so that's not totally uncommon to have a project that just, you know, you buy the land and the deal just never comes together. That happens every once in a while. The idea of shovel goes in the ground and then the deal dies is, is what I'm getting at.
Thank you for the response.
Do you have another question?
I'll, I'll stop.
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the Chair's request for a roadmap. Obviously, we want this project to move forward, and every day that passes makes it that much harder to do it. That said, the complexity of these various agreements is really tough to follow. And I can't even swear to it, but just based on my cursory review, because there's so many different agreements, there may be one or two internal inconsistencies in some of the definitions. So like a PHL loan agreement could be a junior loan in one document and could be a, a different reference as defined in another document. So just having the acronyms laid out and a roadmap and knowing who's agreeing to what, I agree, the need is great. Nothing here really raises any red flags, other than my own confusion and maybe some of the requests of my fellow supervisors to clarify some things. So looks good at first glance, but I do think there is some confusion and, and having a little better roadmap of the parties and the various designations of debt and what happens in the rare event of a default or a breach, you know. I'd appreciate just a summary document. Don't need a whole lot, but if that could come back, if we're bringing it back, that could be attached to the staff report as kind of a roadmap of, of all the various parties. So do want to signal very strong support that we move ahead with this timely, but also very sensitive to the requests made of my fellow supervisors, that a little more clarity would be good.
Thank you, Supervisor Green. So I'm hearing that you would like us to, I'm, I'm taking notes, but it, it sounds like we're going to need to bring this back to your Board on the 24th.
Yes. But we have another comment from Vice Chair, Simon.
Yeah, just a, a question with everybody online right now on, you know, what does this do with moving the Ford project? I know we always say we want to build housing and other things. Does bringing this back on the 24th, or does the non-approval today and pushing it to the 24th, is that going to create any situations that helps this project not happen? That's a, a question that I have as we move forward. Because ultimately, understanding everything and all the risks, always something we want to do. I thought the suggestion from County Council to appoint somebody so we could be kept appraised of anything that may be going south with this project, but it sounds like, you know, can I get an answer to that question?
There, and, and.
I believe that may speak to that. I think that that's.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're up against a, a pretty tight timeline. So, but Beth, please, please chime in.
Sure. So, you know, we are moving forward with this project with commitments from the county providing loans to us. And so, you know, we have the low-income housing tax credit.
Excuse me, just having a real hard time. We can't, we can't hear you.
So we've got awards. If I can talk closer, can you hear me?
Not well.
Yeah, it's not, it's not good.
So, William, can you talk about the shovel-ready deadline, please?
Yeah, hopefully everyone can hear me a little better than.
Yes.
Very difficult to hear her. I don't know what, what the issue is there. We do have a, a bit of a timing issue, which is the project was awarded tax credits from the state of California. We have a deadline that is fixed by the Tax Credit Allocation Committee that we cannot extend. We have a deadline that is fixed by the Tax Credit Allocation Committee that we cannot extend, and that is coming up, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but it's in, I think, the middle to the end of March.
March.
To do, so that sounds like it's far away, but it's actually not that far, because as County Council and Todd know, we are having weekly calls with this entire project team. And most importantly, we need the county's approval of the PLHA loan documents, so those can be shipped to the state Housing and Community Development Department, so then they can start their own internal processing. That's the date that is really sort of important to us, because it takes HCD quite a bit of talent. Even though these are standard documents that they've seen before a bunch of times, it does take them a long time to do their internal processing. That's really what's driving our need to have the county approve this sooner rather than later, just so we can get HCD's process, internal process working. So everything is in place by early March, so we're nowhere near our drop deadline that, again, we cannot move.
Could you speak, I'm sorry, could you speak more specifically to the implications on the timeline? Were to this be continued to the 24th? That's a two-week delay.
Are you asking me yours? Beth's going to try it. So, yeah, so I think, you know, I'd have to, Beth, I don't know if you have a calendar handy, but I mean, I believe HCD takes up to 60 days to do their internal processing. So that is putting us in a tight, tight timeframe. And again, ideally, we would want HCD's approval as soon as possible, just because everything else in this project sort of is contingent on that. So it is sort of like chasing our tail, trying to get everything resolved. If county doesn't approve, HCD can't start its process. If HCD can't start its process, the other financing we have lined up is also waiting on HCD to produce their documents. It is putting the pressure, it is putting pressure on this project that is, you know, not insurmountable, but is also not necessary, meaning, you know, anything could go wrong between now and our closing if we can't get HCD's documents and money all keyed up.
Okay. So we, I think we appreciate that this is an urgent item, but I don't, I personally don't feel well enough prepared for this, and it sounds like the rest of the Board or other Board members are feeling that way.
I still wanted to ask the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I still wanted to ask the question.
Okay.
I would like to provide just additional clarification to Supervisor Simon. So let's say hypothetically, in a best-case scenario, these agreements were approved today, and they would be then submitted to HCD. If we look at 60 days, that's putting us onto March 10th, when we know that the deadline to obtain the tax credits is the middle to end of March. So were we to push this to a 24th approval date, we are pushed right up against the end of March, and that may push us past the deadline of being eligible for those tax credits. So I think that is the rough and dirty, the high-level summary of the timeline.
And did County Council have a comment?
I'm just wondering if, I thought I'd heard mention of the county PLHA loan agreement as being a critical document, and your Board's agreed to execute such a document already. If that's a critical document to this timeline that would assist, perhaps, perhaps your Board could move forward and consider approving that, and then looking at the language of the remaining documents on the 24th. I don't know if that's viable, but if that loan agreement or the regulatory agreement, et cetera, if those are the critical documents to get this project moving forward, then perhaps your Board could consider that, and then looking at the specific language with regard to subordination and the promissory notes, et cetera, on the 24th, if those aren't critical.
Is there a response to that?
William, you have your hand raised. Was it your intention to respond?
I was, I mean, I needed, that's fine with me. That would be, anything we can approve on the PLHA front today, the better. So, yes, I think to the extent the Board is comfortable approving anything, you know, we need PLHA approval so we can go get these submitted to HCD. The reason I'd raised my hand, though, was I just wanted to also point out, if we had any control over HCD, we would just tell them to speed up their internal process based on whatever, you know, on how the county, whatever the county's timeline ended up being. But in reality, we have absolutely no control over HCD, and they need, they need as much time as possible.
Supervisor Sabatier?
My last question, and Ms. Grant, you may have already responded to this, but since the PLHA loan states that it's between the Lake County Housing Commission, and we are not the full commission at this point without the invitation of our sixth member, is that still something that's even available for us to vote on when it's not between County of Lake?
That is going to be a problem.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to ask those questions. Sounds like the majority of the Board wants to come back on the 24th, but I wanted everybody to understand. And the whole questioning on the project is want to see the project built in Lake County. So that's, that's just why I wanted to ask those questions.
Now, there is, of course, and I don't know in terms of what the Board's calendar is today, but it may still be possible to get that member here if your Board determines time is critical for those documents. It would be, I believe, the, Susan's pointed out, the first four documents that would be part of this.
Personally, I would prefer that that sixth member be aware that they're coming here to vote on something that they've read. Not being aware means that they're being asked potentially to come here without knowledge of what they're being invited to vote on. So I want to make sure they have the right timeframe to review these documents. There's a lot of documents, and I would be open for if we need to do a special meeting to try to get this approved or reviewed again and considered at earlier time than the 24th. But I would, I do not know what that person has been told, or if that person has consistently read all our agendas to prepare for things that they have not been told about.
Your Board may want to defer this a bit, because it's possible that the Housing Commission member was actually invited in advance and just is not in attendance, which would lend itself to potentially a different outcome in terms of you going forward today.
I would like to see more clarity.
Aye, me too.
What are the chances of having a special board meeting around this before the 24th? I just, I don't want to push it out to the 24th if we don't have to, but I don't know. I've never asked this question before, so I don't know if that's even a possibility.
I would, I would chime in, certainly support, support that option, would actually even recommend that. I do want to be sensitive to concerns stated here. However, the greater risk here is that we do not get this bundle in timely, and that the application flounders for whatever reason. These are incredibly complicated things to do. It's always a time crunch when you're talking about affordable housing apps. I understand there are some questions about, you know, risk and stuff like that, you know. And other than due diligence, you know, I want to be able to address that potential risk. But to me, the far greater risk, as Vice Chair Simon pointed out, is that we fail to timely act, and somehow this goes away at the state level. So if we can split the baby and do some additional due diligence and get a better roadmap for the Board, but also be sensitive to the concerns stated by staff and the principles to this contract, totally open to a special meeting if, if the rest of the Board would consider that.
Thank you, Supervisor Green. I appreciate that.
Did they?
Well, they shouldn't open to the public yet.
Yeah, I haven't opened to the public. We haven't gotten there yet. But I will now. Do we have anybody in the chambers who wishes to speak on this? Come on up.
Joan Moss, I am also confused. I want to know what a nonrecourse loan, what that means. I want to know if there was a situation in the past where we contracted to buy property and build something, and we didn't, and we had to pay back an old debt. I'd like to know about that. And I don't understand finances. I don't think I am the only person in the room that doesn't understand finances. And I would like, as a member of the public, I would like to understand what is happening here. So I hope you have, you wait, and you have a special meeting where we can all get on the same, get on the same page. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments in the Zoom room?
None on Zoom.
Okay. Then I'll close public comment and bring it back to the Board.
I know Stephen's name was mentioned earlier, and I know Stephen's going to look at me like, what?
He already is.
I didn't know if he had anything to add, or if he didn't. I'm not sure. Or if that was just about the liaison and the suggestion. I don't know. I just wanted to.
Stephen Carter, Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. I didn't have anything to add, but there is quite a time constraint. But I do think, since I haven't seen these documents before now, and it sounds like other fiscal within the department haven't either, that we should reschedule for at least a little further out, like a special meeting. Because then we would feel comfortable with the fiscal side.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask my questions, talk about the time constraint. You know, obviously here, or feel that the Board is, obviously wants to reschedule this, whether it's a special meeting, or it's on the 24th, either one of those will work for me. So I just wanted to talk about that. We got to make a decision one way or the other. So whether it comes back in the special meeting or the 24th, you know, this is a project we've been pushing hard to get. We've got this far. Let's see if we can get it across the finish line with everybody's concerns and build some much-needed housing here in Lake County. So I know that's the entire Board's intent. So I just wanted to ask that question. I didn't mean to drag it on a bunch, but I knew it was there. I just wanted to comment it in the public that we're, we're trying to push this thing through and make sure that everybody's protected in the right way. So that's all.
Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon. I have a lot of gray hair as a result of this project. So whatever we can do to keep moving it forward, I would be most appreciative.
Yeah, Todd, this is one of the first conversations that you and I had years ago.
Yes. And here we are again.
And here we are again. So this is important. We do want to move it forward.
Yes, I appreciate that.
We could have a special meeting Tuesday.
I recommend a special meeting if the Board is available for this Friday.
I'll make myself available.
How about 1:00? I don't have, I don't have availability in the morning. Does 1:00 work?
The 13th, right?
Friday the 13th.
How appropriate. And although I'll be on vacation, probably wearing a grass skirt, but I'll do what I can to, to be available for that meeting. Otherwise, my staff, I mean, they can handle it, but I will, if there's a Zoom meeting link, I will join in.
Okay. And so it's clear on what we're looking for. We do, I'm sorry, did you have another comment? Okay. We're looking for a map of how all these documents relate to each other, risks and responsibilities of the stakeholders, who will be monitoring any risks or potential risks that could come up. And the advisory committee member needs to be present, correct?
We're housing.
Or, I'm sorry, the housing. Okay. Is there anything else that we discussed that would need to be part of Friday's meeting?
Are we calling it as a special board meeting, or a special meeting of whatever housing agency that extra member has to be on?
Well, I was just first making sure we're all on the same page of what's going to be required for us to be able to make a decision on that day. Is there anything else that we were talking about that is needed? Okay.
Did you have something? I think Ms. Grant had something.
The agenda should, your Board sits concurrently as a number of bodies, including the Housing Commission. However, in this case, I think because it's a special meeting, you should make it very clear on the agenda that your Board's sitting concurrently is the County of Lake and the Lake County Housing Commission. That way, there will not be any doubt, and all of these items can just be put on as they were before with the additional information that your Board wants, 1:00 p.m. on the 13th. And your Board's entitled to set this meeting. If the additional member of the Commission is not available, your Board can still go forward.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Sorry. One last comment. And so we went through a huge process with our successor agency, and I'm not using the right terminology, but the redevelopment Oversight Board, thank you, with the anticipation of saying, if the project doesn't move forward, we will sell the property and divulge that money back to the taxing agencies that helped purchase the property in the first place. This agreement kind of puts a wrench in that wheel potentially. It doesn't mean 100% that that won't happen, but there's the potential. At the very least, I think we should invite them to be here for public comment, let them know that this is something that we're, I just think that their comment is valuable to us, because that, this agreement seems to have a little bit of conflict with the agreement that was made with the Oversight Board.
Thank you, Chair. Of course, the Oversight Board is an entity. It's a local government entity, and it has to be Brown Act compliant. So you'd be asking them to essentially convene in a public meeting, your Board's special meeting. That may or may not be doable. I suppose representatives could come, but they wouldn't be able to speak on behalf of the Oversight Board unless the Oversight Board had already had its own meeting to delegate that authority. So it becomes a little bit more cumbersome. The final thing I would, I would just point out is that, yes, the Housing Authority would be able to obtain the property, but it is not simply that then the Housing Authority would have to sell. The Housing Authority, I believe, has a number of years, five years, where it could develop its own housing project. So if something should default from one of the parties, it's not out of the realm of possibility that all of the other participants would be able to come together and still make a housing project move forward. So I don't think it's a prohibition necessarily. I doubt if, if everything had to be sold, I doubt there would be much in the way of monetary compensation from that. But the priority of the Housing Authority's response in the contract is to attempt to get a project, affordable housing project of its own moving. And Supervisor Simon sits on the Oversight Board, so if his recollection's different, you
No, you hit it right on the head, obviously, and we've gone, you know, it wasn't a simple straight line to even get it to the Board to get it to this point. I know there was a lot of research, a lot of questions that were asked by you, Supervisor Sabatier, and some of the other folks on the Oversight Board to get it to this point. So obviously, everyone, at least on the Board, at least a few of the folks are, you know, see these conversations that are going on. There may be more raised between now and when we bring it back for the special board meeting. If that's the case, then obviously it'll open up another can of worms that we'll have to go back through. So anyway, So anyway, you know, for, for, for my point of view, whether it's a Friday meeting, the only question I have on the Friday meeting, if that gives our own staff opportunity to look at the fiscal stuff that wanted to be reviewed. I know, I know we want to get it done, but I know we have the opportunity. When the timeline was laid out, yes, the 24th pushes it a little farther down the line, but the 24th does seem like it could still happen in that timeframe. So I just, some of those questions I was asking, I want to make sure that if we are going to assign a liaison or fiscal to review, that there is plenty of time to do that.
Getting quite a few signs from the back row. Thumbs up, yes. Okay, Stephen has time to review the documents.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen.
Okay. Okay, so you have your hand up?
I think it's.
Is it, oh, is it still left up?
No, oh, no, I, yes, I do have my hand up. I just wanted to confirm for the, for the next meeting, when we use the term roadmap, what exactly should we, we provide? Because I just want to make sure we give you the information you all need. So is there something in particular?
Sure. So, yeah, in the executive summary, if there was a way to outline how all of these documents relate to each other, what, you know, what the amounts are for each agreement, that would be really helpful for us to understand. To have a consolidated memo rather than having to read all the documents individually.
Yes. As a person who gets paid to read the documents, I can assure you, they're not fun. We can, well, we'll just save it for, for your next meeting. We can certainly give you as much information as you want.
And CAO, Parker?
Yes, and William, I would also recommend a chart, a one-page chart with all the different entities, the narratives, the purpose, the timelines, the deadlines. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be that complicated. You can do it in shorthand. But at least there's a one-page display of what the narrative will state.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And if you want to send it to me prior to the meeting to review, I'd be more than happy to, to take a look at that. If, if that's possible, the memo for the meeting?
It's, it's just when a document goes to the chair, it goes to the full board.
Okay.
As a matter of law.
Okay.
Never mind, that was my wonderful idea.
Nice.
I just wanted to make sure, since she, she knows what we're looking for, that somebody could be working, but I think that she can work with Susan and then our CAO, it can provide that liaison.
Yeah, and also, yeah, who will be appointed to monitor all of this? Is that, is that going to be somebody in behavioral health or somebody in admin?
I do have a recommendation. I recommend that admin have a fiscal team with one designee, similar to what we do with other, like CDBG. I'm looking at him. And he's like, one more. Yes, we're going to do one more.
Okay. That's my recommendation. Okay.
So Friday.
So Friday.
1:00 p.m., you said?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, 1,300 hours on the 13th. What could go wrong?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for, to set a meeting date?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to have a special meeting of the county supervisor, Lake County Supervisors, as well as the Lake County Housing Commission at 1:00 p.m. on January 13th, Friday, January 13th.
To consider this.
To consider item 7.4.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Better add that.
Then we will see you all on Friday. Thank you for all the work that you've done to get us to this point. We're very close and appreciate that you're going to make time for us on Friday. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Todd, since you're here.
Yeah, it's me again.
Why don't we finish out your items with 7.5? Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between the County of Lake and Native American Mental Health Services, DBA American Mental Health Services for Telepsychiatry Services for Fiscal Years 2022 to 2023, 23 to 24, and 24 to 25 for a new contract maximum of $3,875,877.36 and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Todd Metcalf, Behavioral Services. So as you just mentioned, this is the First Amendment to our existing contract with North American Mental Health Services. What this is, what the intent of this is, is that we, we are, we are correcting our initial calculations for services rendered under the terms of this agreement. Just quickly, North American Mental Health Services provides telehealth, medication, and LPS conservatorship evaluations in addition to helping us meet the California Department of Healthcare Services Network Adequacy Mandate. And that was mentioned a little bit earlier in one of our conversations today. You know, I've talked about the network adequacy mandate before, which means that county behavioral health providers must ensure that client accessibility to programs and services is, is within a prescribed time and distance formula. The, the increase here is indeed substantial, but I, I just want to assure the board that, that all required services will be reimbursed by the State Department of Healthcare Services. And just quickly, so far, under the, the terms of this contract, since July 1st, 2022, we have already served, or they have already served, 1,800 adults and 485 children, which pretty much equates to a total of a little over 1,900 hours of service. So just kind of wanted to throw that, that in there, that they are a valued contracted service provider for us. And Elise, I see you're still here. Did, did you want to add any more to, to what I just said?
Yeah, I can provide clarification.
I wasn't clear?
I'll provide additional information. So there is a line item in the Fee Schedule Table, item 4.5, that is for teletherapy services, and those services are actually funded through our Early Psychosis Intervention Grant. So they are also reimbursable as a specialty mental health service, but they are grant-funded because we have difficulty filling in-person vacancies for therapists, and there's a need for that team specifically. So just some clarification there. It does also increase the line item for medical assistance services. That was initially much lower, and then we have dramatically increased our utilization of medical assistance services, observing, of course, the fact that we do not have a medical assistant on staff internally. And so we leaned on this contractor to provide those services, which are critical to the functioning of our clinic as regards medication services. So those are some extra highlights there.
Thank you, Elise. I, I sort of forgot about some of that, so thanks for helping me fill in the blanks.
Okay, thank you. Comments, Supervisor Spatier?
Quick question, well, actually, comment and question. Number one, on the matrix of 4.5 and the overall changes, we need to fix the numbers, they're not correct. It shows that there's, for the first item, it's with a 12 cents at the end, and the next item is 80 cents at the end, which equals 92 cents. Everything else is zero, and the total is 12 cents. So we're off by 80 cents on each one of the totals, which means that our total is off by $2.40 or something like that at, at the end. So we need to fix that matrix so that we don't come back and do another amendment for that. But I have to say, I'm, I'm a little confused, maybe I'm not good with math, but it says fiscal year 2223, that we're using 1.4 full-time equivalent at $220 an hour, and that it equates to $640,000. Typically, full-time equivalent to me is 1,080 hours, or is it 2080? 2080. So I got less than $500,000 for the total. No, okay, that, that matches. Sorry, I did the wrong number. But anyways, the, the 80 cents needs to be added to each total, so the matrix of 4.5 needs to change. And then the very, the compensation in line item number three needs to change as well. And in my email, I have the right number that I provided you.
And we, we can make those changes. We should be able to make it on the fly today. I'm looking.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah.
Yes, that won't be a problem.
Any other comments from board members? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a real quick question. I think I probably know the answer, but the contract is for telepsychiatry services. I do see there is some smallish allocation provided toward onsite provision of services. So is this all telemedicine all the time? Is this the, just a fact of life of living in a rural county and we have no in-county resources? I guess I, I just need the 32nd elevator speech of the importance of this contract, and I assume it's very important to be, be able to provide any type of psychiatric services to our residents. But as, as labeled, this is all telepsychiatry services, looks like there is some minor provision of onsite services. So can I just get the quick rundown of, of the state of provision of psychiatric services and what proportion is between telemedicine and onsite medicine?
The telemedicine, I can't put a number to it, but it is.
I'm happy to field that question.
Oh, all right, well, go for it.
So I could go on and on and on about, of rural, rural America, but for, for the purposes of your question and various due observation, yes, this does include a line item where we were hoping the contractor would provide us with an onsite, in-person provider. It doesn't take a psychologist to realize that it probably is a great idea to have face-to-face meetings for healthcare, but due to the fact that we are in a rural area with a healthcare, a professional healthcare shortage, and are also fighting for psychiatrists along with the rest of the state and nation where we are severely understaffed, we are unfortunately relegated to accepting telepsychiatry, and, you know, the, the other option is there is no service. To date, though, as an update, we have not been successful with the contractor in actually securing an onsite provider, though we do have those funds allocated. I just want to be transparent there. That being said, as an additional point of information, we will be issuing another round of requests for proposals for this and many other specialty mental health services. So we're always shopping around for the best deal and the best services with a goal of providing in-person services whenever possible, and we do not have presently any county staff employed that provide medication services. All of it goes through a contracted provider.
Thanks, Elise. You said it much better than I would have.
Thank you for that clarification. Definitely work in progress. We, we need the services. I'm just hearing any number of muffled microphones and disconnected things, and it, it's the nature of modern medicine, I guess. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Supervisor Green.
All right, if there's no comments at this time, all been up for public input. Anybody in the chambers or on Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom.
Nothing on Zoom? Okay, then I will bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Native American Mental Health Services, DBA North American Mental Health Services for Telepsychiatry Services for Fiscal Year 2223, 2324, 2425, for a new contract maximum of, and I'm going to change that number based on what needs to be, $3,875,879.76 with an amendment to Section Three to correlate with the same number that I just stated, and Section 4.5 updated. So each of the totals of the fiscal years are $1,291,959.92. And that is, those, those are the amendments needed to fix that.
And authorize the board chair to sign?
Oh, sorry, didn't finish that line. Yes, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Lunch? Let's take lunch.
Been smelling like food for the last hour.
Okay, it smells like a bagel now. Okay, we'll reconvene at 1, what time is our 1:00? I don't know.
Because 1:15.
1:15 is the item?
Perfect.
Yeah. Yes, 1:15. We'll be back here to look at Item 6.9. See you then. Okay, we are back from our lunch, and we will go to our 1:15, Item 6.9, Consideration of an Agreement to Provide Funding in Support of the Build Program facilitated by North Coast Opportunities in the not-to-exceed amount of $800,000.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. On Tuesday, July 19, 2022, your board acted to allocate $800,000 in American Rescue Plan Act coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds to support the activities of the Build Project facilitated by Lake County's Community Action Agency, North Coast Opportunities Incorporated, or NCO. This commitment was made in the interest of acting on two significant community needs. One, the inventory of affordable housing, and two, development of Lake County's construction trades workforce. The County of Lake is just one, one funder of this important program. Property owners also cover a portion of the costs of the work undertaken at a specific property, so the effect of your investment and those of others are enhanced by this network of contributions, if you will. The agreement before you today in the not-to-exceed amount of $800,000 formalizes your support of Build. Project objectives, outputs, and outcomes advanced by your board's commitment consist to the following. Up to 30 participants will participate in Build training, and at least 24, 80%, will graduate from the program. 100% of graduates will demonstrate hard and soft job skill acquisitions, job acquisition skills measured through a skills assessment conducted at the end of the training. 80% of graduates will secure employment. 100% of participants will be securely housed. At least two additional contractors will begin working with the program, and by the end of the project, at least 25 habitable homes will be added to the county inventory of affordable rental housing. I would now like to introduce Robin Barra of NCO, who is present in Zoom this afternoon, and if she's not promoted to panelist, please, if we can do that. And she will provide an update on the recent successes of the Build Project, and we're also excited that Derek Fiedler-Riddle and Michael Willis of the program are in the chambers today. Staff recommends your board consider this update and approve the agreement following any discussion and public input. And Robin, thank you for joining.
Yes.
Hi, I don't have sharing permissions, and I will need that to play my video. So I'm going to go ahead and start speaking, and maybe we can work on that.
Okay, Robin, if you can hear me, if you can accept the invitation to be assigned as a panelist in this meeting, then you'll have the sharing permissions that you need.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, sorry for that delay. Good afternoon, I'm Robin Barra, Director of Community Projects for North Coast Opportunities. It's my pleasure today to talk to you about NCO's Build Program. That's build, building up individuals and local development. Build is a workforce development program aimed at skill development in the construction industry. We launched in 2020, and the program continues to gain momentum and support. We look forward to finalizing the ARPA contract with the county. We also just received additional funding from the California Workforce Development Board. This means that our anticipated program budget for Build will be just under $950,000. We're really excited about. We're really excited about that because in twenty twenty, we started with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our community and our funders have taken notice of this important program, and we are grateful. Like many programs, Build was developed out of need. NCO's New Dig's Rapid Rehousing Program was carrying really long wait lists because we just couldn't find enough affordable housing. In addition, many of our clients needed work. They didn't have the skills. Build was developed to create more housing, to make housing safe and habitable, to give people job skills in construction, and to create a hiring pool for contractors who simply don't have access to enough skilled laborers. These needs are certainly still here, but Build is making a dent and changing the lives of the people we do serve. Technically, Build has been underfunded the past six months while we wait for approval, but that hasn't stopped us. As the Community Action Agency for Lake County, NCO has remained devoted to investing in this critical program. Project Coordinator Derek Fiedler, who you'll meet in a moment, has diligently kept the program running. All this work paid off because we are now funded, and we just held one of our most successful graduation ceremonies to date. And with that, I will play a five-minute video for you, which will help you better understand the program, our outcomes, and our achievements. All right, let's hope this works. Here we go. And with that, I will invite Derek Fiedler up. He's with you in person today to answer any questions you might have about the program.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Do you have anything to add before we start questions and answers, or want to provide the opportunity?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I I just want to acknowledge just how grateful I am for the opportunity to, for the investment and for the opportunity to invest uh, in these students because they, they're worth it. They're absolutely worth it. This was by far one of the most effective and motivated groups that we have ever had. Uh, and part of, as you can tell in the video, some of the things that they were able to accomplish in a short amount of time was just amazing. This was a unique, a unique uh, cohort six because we were under a tighter schedule. We started about a month and a half later than we normally do, and so our margins were were no longer. Uh, we actually, we graduated just a few days before Christmas, just to make sure that they were able to get absolutely every uh, opportunity to get their hours and their experience and their trainings in. And just with all of the the new partnerships that we're able to form this year and uh, the work that we're able to do is just, uh, I'm just very grateful that that we get the opportunity to do this for these people, these these new leaders in Lake County.
So when this opportunity came to us and we looked at it in our subcommittee, um, I was excited from the beginning. This is fundamentally changing lives, and it's a small scale, but it's going to have a lot of reaching effects. And, you know, having these cohorts, learning what they're learning, and then providing the housing for these families is incredible. And um, I'm really excited. I'm excited to move forward with this. And I'm just, um, wondering if there's any other comments uh, from the board members right now?
I just had one really dumb question uh, from the video, hand tool tricks. And I'm thinking of juggling power saws. And I know that's not true, but um, I assume as part of the training, they learn how to operate tools safely and uh, and probably learn some tricks. But I just had a question about the phrase. What hand tool tricks do you guys uh, teach in your program?
Not a dumb question, very good one, actually. When I see that, the first thing I thought you were gonna say was spinning a speed square the fastest, Ben. Um, no, actually, some of those is, you'd be surprised that much of the knowledge is is in the fine details, uh, in the in the trade of being a craftsman, of being a construction worker. And so a lot of that actually would be a speed square. You look at it, and it's just a, you know, it's a triangle. But a lot of people don't know how to use it. And so one of our instructors, Michael Willis, is with us here. He's in-house. He's our site supervisor for the work that we do on the housing and the remodels. But we also have, uh, one of our new partners is with Mendocino College. Uh, because of our combined efforts, we were able to revamp their Intro to Construction coursework, uh, which is now avail, going to be available this semester. People can get the whole certificate right here in Lake County, uh, as well as UCAIA. So the instructor, who's also named Michael, uh, Michael Ross, he was able to show them all the different ways that you could use a speed square, uh, to be able to, you know, be able to figure out a roof pitch, to making sure that you can get your layout for, you know, two-by-four framing construction, things like that. And so typically, they're called tricks because there's little tiny things that could save you a half day's work.
Go ahead.
I think you just upped their insurance uh, premium with that comment.
He said it was a square. He didn't say it was juggling with uh, chainsaws.
So I I appreciate that it's not just a um, an idea of what you're going to do. I love seeing what you've done. One of the uh, things that I was most concerned about when this came to the ARPA meeting was the fact that um, would we be rehabbing rentals that are currently substandard but still being rented? Or would we be rehabbing houses that are not currently on, and and all of the above need to be rehabbed and brought to par? A part of me was, at what point is somebody who's not taking care of their house that is renting it, that's making money off somebody, should get the help to rehab? But I see that in the uh, agreement, it's to really put an effort in expanding the number of uh, rentals that are on the market, which I really appreciate that that's on there. And I know that it's not possibly gonna be a hundred percent. Um, that's not, that that you can't force that. Um, so, but I was looking at the reporting requirements, and I'm wondering, um, I didn't see any specifics to what the reporting requirements are. It says something brought to you by the the County of Lake. But I want to make sure that we find out how many houses were rehabbed that were already rentals and how many are new. I think that's an important one to kind of qualify. How did this program work to really expand uh, the market? Uh, and then, of course, I I'm, I see the numbers already, but I didn't see it in the agreement. The numbers you shared with us, with the number of trainees, number of graduates, what they're doing after the fact, I think that's really important data, again, because there's so much more to this than just the rehabbing of the houses. I mean, we're we're helping people get to a destination. Obviously, you you did well in working with Mendocino and bringing back the construction class. I think that helps kind of bring everything together. Not only did you learn a skill, but now you have the potential of getting a certificate for that skill, uh, which gets you into the workforce a lot faster and at a higher level potentially. Uh, so all of the, I I like it. It was very exciting to see my friend Jerome Snipes, part of the program. Uh, haven't seen Frog in a very long time, but um, I've known that kid since he was eight years old, nine years old. Uh, lived across the street from me, wonderful family. So um, seeing that you're reaching out to uh, true locals and 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 helping out, I I think all of this is exciting. I would like the reporting requirements to be more specific. I don't know if they already have those specifics, uh, but I think that will help us to really measure the success of the program in the long run, um, because I think it's twofold. It's the people involved and it's the housing. Uh, and so that's, those are my comments.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Seen programs similar to this before, and uh, they they've worked. They've worked really well. I really like the idea that we're, or that, not we, but you are training uh, folks to do this uh, construction as we continuously have issues with the, you know, contractors in the county, um, as they're going over to Sonoma County or wherever else they can uh, conduct a more lucrative job. So um, with with the, these young, uh, you know, these young kids coming in there and doing this, hopefully they look at it from their perspective after graduating to come and do more work uh, in the community. Take care of some of that, right?
Okay.
Obviously, support the project. Uh, it'll be great to see with this large investment next year what's been able to be done, already saw what's being done. So obviously, complete support um, of what's happening, because I, it really is. It's that holistic attitude towards how do we get these young guys or these folks going through the core program to not only look at it as a job opportunity, but just like you said, getting a bank account, you know, looking at the mental health issues, all the other stuff that needs to do it, and then just showing up, you know, learning that. I saw on there, somebody had a perfect attendance. I don't know which one. It went by pretty quick. I was trying to read it there. But uh, those are all great things, you know, in building that uh, young workforce i- as we try and rehab Lake County's housing situation. So I think it's, it's pretty unique, and I really like the way it's set up where you're, you find the um, the homeowner, they got requirements on the dollar amounts for one year to five years, depending how much rehab's done there to really affect that housing opportunity for folks. So I am in complete support of the program, and we'll look to see what's being done with this investment that's being done by all of us in the ARPA program. Thank you very much for bringing this through, the committee that's looking at it. I know you're approached by all kinds of uh, things. Heck, I think I even sent something back to you in my district uh, to be reconsidered, but I appreciate support.
Okay, so I'll open it up for a public comment. Is there anyone in the board chambers or in the Zoom room? Is that it?
Hold up, hold up. Nothing in Zoom.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board.
I have a couple more uh, questions.
Okay.
Uh, just real quick on capacity. Are you guys needing to expand your team in order to handle this uh, new influx of uh, funding in order to, uh, because I know you have two years and you shared with us what you've done over the past two years, and it's a whole lot less than what we're asking uh, today. Uh, so just kind of curious how you're you're planning to handle that, or if you've already been kind of setting yourself up for that expansion.
Yeah, so one of the the big things that we've done is hired on Michael Willis right here, um, which allows us to have a full crew of six. And then we are looking at ways to where we could have greater outcomes as far as the amount of uh, housing units that we can touch, as far as remodels or uh, even uh, new construction as well. I'll just say, well, one of the things I'm looking forward to is getting together with the committee and being able to not just uh, how to say, like flesh out the details of the outcomes of, you know, what would be good goals, but then also uh, expectations for the investment in this program. But then also to network with connections and to see what other um, potential capacity building could be built, even, you know, right here with the committee. And then really simply, like, we're doing things to where we can expand. And then we are hoping that we can be able to do more of the the housing side and do more work on remodels. For us, it's a constant balance of quantity and quality because we have a new partner with the the remodel that we were able to do with the rental. He was a a new homeowner, new investor in Lake County, and that's a new rental that's going towards uh, affordable housing for New Dig's clients that are coming out of homelessness. So that's adding to that stock. However, it needed a lot of work, and so that took over a month of our time in an already, you know, truncated, uh, unabbreviated cohort that didn't leave us a whole lot of time to do another significant pro- uh, project. And so kind of balancing out, it's like, do we want to, you know, take on smaller projects but, you know, have more of an impact that way, or take on a few less and be able to do like new construction and, you know, new units as well as significant remodels?
And then I do have a request. I'm not sure if it's on there. I didn't see it. I'd love to get a a report back a year later, what's been happening, uh, maybe some of the struggles, some of the successes, so we can help each other out to make sure that you're successful in your program, because we want you to be successful. We're not just uh, creating this relationship and just kind of seeing what happens. We want to make sure that we could support you. Uh, that's something I would love to add to uh, the agreement if possible, to get a a year in review. I'm actually really excited about where we can be two years later, because I think there's still a lot to gain in your efficiencies and your understanding on how to better your program as you go, since it's still fairly new. Uh, because I'm thinking future-wise, we have a lot of tax defaulted properties, and maybe we could figure out how to do some rehabs on some of those. As a nonprofit, there's ways for us to build that relationship in different ways. Uh, so I think there's a lot of excitement that comes from this. Want to see the success first and foremost, uh, and then maybe we could talk a little further about what else, how else we can grow that relationship.
Great.
And since no one else seems to be saying anything, Madam Chair, I would like to move Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve the agreement to provide funding and support of the Build program facilitated by North Coast Opportunities, Inc. in the not to exceed amount of $800,000. And if I get a second with the amendments as proposed for reporting and the annual report to the board.
Well, I'll second with a clarification. I'm just looking at the reporting requirement right now, which is kind of financially. And I noticed there's four tranches, tranches. I don't know how to pronounce that. But the funding comes out in sequence. I'm very satisfied, based on the video that's presented, that informal reporting on the success of this program will happen. But to the extent you want to hear more frequent updates, it seems like each time we switch into a new tranche of funds, there'd be an opportunity at least to report back not only that the financials have been done, but we have happy workers, we have placed homeless people, we have something like that. So, you know, if you want to clarify what type of reporting, I think there's opportunity within the existing project agreement as it's presented that we'll get all the reporting we need. But how often would you want to do that? Every tranche?
I want an annual report. I want to make sure they have the time to go through a cohort, have the time to go through their process. I'm sure that takes time, so I don't want to get them back up here and saying we're working on rather than this is what we've done. And I think that the overall reporting criteria of just the number of houses and which ones were rental before and which ones are now new rentals, to me, that's just final report as typical for reporting requirements based on grant funding.
And Madam Chair, if you don't mind, so the agreement as currently presented does say that updates will be provided to the Board of Supervisors on request. And I think annual is certainly consistent with that. And also that there will be quarterly written reports and staff will be meeting with NCO to ensure that we have understanding of what the content of those reports will be. I did take notes on the items that you were recommending and we can certainly talk through that and ensure we get those numbers.
Do you want an annual presentation? Is that what you're thinking? So that we can come here and see next January, how many homes and how many families and how many cohorts? Is that doable?
Oh, that'd be fun.
Let's do that. Okay, so.
I don't know if we have a second or not.
Can we start over?
Well, I mean, I'm just, you want to add it to the contract. So it's like, where does it go and how long is that sentence? So the addition of one sentence to number two, reporting requirements, where it starts off contractor, she'll submit quarterly reports in a format. That's for the financials. And then it ends a final report will likewise, how about we just amend it to say an annual report will likewise be provided? And that's on paragraph two of the Build project agreement. So instead of a final report, how about just an annual? Or it already says, updates on project progress will be provided on request. So how about updates on project progress will be provided annually? Would that be a good amendment? Would you live with that?
The media muted herself.
Yeah, I'm waiting for county council.
Okay, do you want it provided or do you want it presented to you? Because those are two different.
Yeah, a board, an annual board presentation.
Okay, then if the amendment is to updates on project progress will be presented to the Board of Supervisors on an annual basis.
And the final report stuff is just, I think, details that can be added to the county format that's already being prepared for stats. So I don't think we need to provide that in there.
Okay, then I'm going to second that as amended.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, Derek and Robin, thank you so much for this work. It's really important work. We appreciate everything that you're doing for our communities and we look forward to seeing you next year, although I'm going to get with you sooner. And I do love your emails that you're sending out. Is everybody on the board getting them?
I don't know.
I took the liberty of adding you all to the mail list. So let me know if you're not receiving them. I'll make sure it's correct.
Mr. Willis, thank you for leading these young men as well. If I can ask you to come to the microphone because we want to hear you.
I can reopen some public, it's okay. We didn't close the item yet, right? So it's still open and we'll reopen. All right, here we are.
I was just saying, you just don't know how rewarding it is to see these young men when they first come in and you have to interview them. Some of them don't have the best of living situations or background. But on the application, it says no skills are required. So for these young men to come in and put forth that effort, you see how many days they actually missed. You know, they were hungry. Some of them come out of programs and they put forth a good effort. Derek has a lot of classes going on to teach them about accounting, DMV. We had a safety class. They go to the college and they were at the college taking those classes too. One young man, he got a job. Another one was promised a job. And it's funny about this program. It's supposed to be construction oriented. But after you go through the process of all the classes and doing construction, your heart may not be in it. But with the training that they receive through Derek and other people coming in motivating them, two of them erode into college. One want to be a drug rehab teacher and the other one wants to go another way. So it's rewarding to me to see them from the beginning until the end. And it wasn't always nice. If you've ever been on a construction site, you know you have problems and difficulties. But we worked through those problems and difficulties and they all graduated and it was thankful. And I'm just glad to be a part of this program. Derek is my supervisor. She's my boss also. I just started in February, but I think this is a good. In August, excuse me. I think this is a good program for Lake County and for the young men because you and I know the poverty rate, the homeless rate and what's really going on in Lake County. And if it wasn't for this program, I think that a few of these young men would be doing something else. And I'm just glad to be a part of the Build program. Okay?
Thank you.
One more plug is that our application for the next cohort is open for just a few more days. So anybody out there listening, you know anybody?
How do people apply?
The best thing would be to, they could go to the website, which is ncoinc.org/build, B-U-I-L-D. But then there's also a short link, bit.ly/build, all caps, dash, apply, small caps.
Since we just approved a relationship with NCO with this, I would like to see us posting that, those links on our social media site, if that's possible. That way, that'll help out. Let's see, it's free advertising by doing a report to us, so it's perfect.
Perfect timing. Yeah. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Looks like our tax collector has arrived.
Get serious now.
So we can move on to.
The way he talked to me earlier, I think he can wait.
Item 7.8, consideration of delegation of investment authority to treasurer tax collector, Patrick Sullivan.
All right, good afternoon, board. Patrick Sullivan, treasurer tax collector. It's my first time being here in that role. That's my first time being here in this role. So Patrick Sullivan, treasurer tax collector. The first item I have up is the consideration of delegation of investment authority to treasurer tax collector. As your board is aware, previously, this delegation was given to the treasurer tax collector when your board opted to develop its investment policy and sort of restart the investment program. We ultimately brought on Chandler Asset Management as our advisor. They have continued to develop our program over the last year. And at this point, we are up and running there. The standard practice in the other California counties is to delegate the authority to the treasurer tax collector. Right now, that authority still lies with your board until you choose to delegate it to this office, if you so choose. The advantage is a streamlined process. The way the workflows go and the interaction between both the banks and Chandler, the treasurer tax collector is sort of the most logical, easiest way to control that flow. Your board still sets that investment policy, which is reviewed each year. There's also regular review when Chandler comes here and reports with my office each quarter. So I believe you'll still have that level of transparency that you were originally looking for and the opportunity to lay in on future changes to a general strategy through the policy. But for day-to-day operations, I am asking that you delegate this authority so that my office can engage directly with Chandler and our banks.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick comment. When is that annual review for the policy? It's been close to about a year since we did that, right?
Yeah, I was, I was curious about that. It depends on when you feel like we were completely done. I think after this next quarterly report, when we get things in order before the end of the fiscal year, we should bring it back and look at it again. So my goal is to bring it back to your board by June.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and again, new kid on the block. So I assume Chandler Asset Management is our fiduciary and they help us manage our investments. Is it strictly the transactions that happen with our investments? Or are they on contract to advise the county and this board on how we slice and dice our various allocations of investments?
So their contract is twofold. It does manage, they do help manage the trade specifically, but they also help develop our policy. Throughout this time, they take the overall policy and directive that was given, I mean, previously, it was by your board. They implement that strategy. So they do look at the allocations. Everything has to stay within the range that's set both by our policy and by state law and regulations. Our policy is actually more restrictive than the state. So the adjustments we made kind of further tailor it. So Chandler makes the decisions, but they're operating within the confines of that policy and all of those allocations. And I'm happy to provide that if it's helpful.
So that policy and then our, I don't know, our contract with them is multi-year or whatever. So all that stuff periodically comes up to the board for review anyway, right? This is kind of pro forma stuff to put the actual authority with your office, but this mechanism that kind of backfills all that stuff is already existing.
Yes, every county has to go through this process each year. Treasurer tax collector from each of the other counties in California goes to their board, receives that delegation of authority and it's renewed on an annual basis. Chandler, we actually only were up and running with them last year. So this is still a recent process. We just essentially are in the infancy of our program here.
Okay. Public input? Anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room have comment on this item?
No hands up in Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board then.
Is there a resolution necessary for this? Or is this just a one and done? We could just move to approve delegation? We can delegate without any underlying document?
Supervisor Simon?
I move to approve delegation of investment authority to the treasurer tax collector.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Item 7.9, consideration of resolution authorizing investment of monies in the local agency investment fund, treasurer tax collector.
So the local agency investment fund, or LEAF, is a pool that's run through the state treasurer's office. The county currently has an account in this pool. That's one of our primary accounts where we maintain sort of an effective yield, but liquidity is important. We're able to access those funds easily. So we make solid use of this every year and especially under a new policy, we will continue to do so. My request here is that your board consider the proposed resolution to authorize the investment of county monies in this fund. We already have the account set up. The underlying purpose for this is because of the transition between Barbara Ringan and myself, this resolution is necessary to finalize my access to the account and restore all our privileges and make sure that transition's complete. So that's the reason this resolution is before your board.
Comments from the board? Do we have any?
So just distinguish then, I just asked on the last item, so no resolution, but this one requires a resolution. So it's just curiosity, the, it seems like two shades of the same thing. So why is a formal resolution required in this case?
This is a state requirement and the resolution is a state requirement. Many jurisdictions interchangeably for their own actions use resolutions or motions. So the first one was county action. This one is to be in compliance with state law requirements and in order to, to access the state treasury. That's why. Good question.
Okay, public input? Anyone in the chambers or on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Yes, come on up.
Michael Wagner, random citizen.
Random.
Here today. It's nice to see everybody again. And Jessica, congratulations. It's nice to see you in the middle of the table. I actually really have a question just around the funds in general. If I remember correctly from last year, most of the money that had been put into the Chandler fund, I think like 25% of it was in US bonds. Do you remember that, Bruno? That conversation?
I'm supposed to remember this?
I'm just, so that's what I recall. And so with that, I was wondering, A, how that had played out? And then B, how that will affect the large amount of money that you guys have invested? I'm not a finance broker or anything like that, but it was something that I had noticed and brought up last year. And I'm not sure if that had been addressed or looked at with the feds increasing the rates, how that will affect the bond market? And maybe it'd be a good idea to diversify.
So, yeah, when we created the policy and that was Supervisor Sabatier, myself, Patrick too, and their CAO, our previous CAO, we started moving things slowly. And so we've had a quarterly update from Chandler and in those updates, it's shown how the portfolio has changed. We didn't want to make a lot, we didn't want to dump everything in one.
Excellent, but you did, you did realize, you looked at it and you said, hey, we're going to change it.
So it was all part of the investment strategy that we created with their guidance. And Patrick can maybe speak more about the outcomes of that if you want to.
Sure, I can address that. Overall, in our portfolio, we stayed fairly short. We're allowed to go out up to three years on a normal basis. We kept our target range around 1.8. So as these rates have continued to rise, we've been able to take advantage of them because each time we close out a position, we're able to reinvest at a higher rate. We are still heavy in US treasuries and agencies just because that is considered to be a safe, a safe position to hold. And given those rate increases, it has been able to achieve a positive rate of return for the county. So that's the track we're on right now. I don't foresee a change, at least in terms of my conversation with Chandler. So I would, I would think we're going to be continuing that for the foreseeable future.
Very good, thanks.
And Michael, just to let you know, August 31st, 2022, 30.9% in US treasury bonds and May 31st, 25.8. So you're on it.
Congratulations, good job, you guys. I mean, that's a huge policy change, a big shift. It shows a lot of foresight and like real capability in making changes. So good job.
Thanks. It's making a big difference, yes. Okay, any more public input? Okay, any more public input? Okay, then I will bring this back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
Okay, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Do you have one more?
There is one more item.
There it is. Okay. Item 711, the addendum, consideration of resolution authorizing investment of monies with U.S. Bank N.A. and authorizing the county treasurer to act as the duly authorized and qualified representative.
So again, this is a similar situation to what we just experienced with the State Treasurer and LEAF. This resolution is required by our bank, U.S. Bank, where we already hold our account. This is our primary custodial account for the county's funds, for the Treasury Pool. This resolution is necessary to complete the enrollment and transition process now with my office, so I've asked for your board to consider this resolution before you.
Comments from the board? No? Okay. Public comment? Chambers or Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Yes. Congratulations.
Hope it simplifies your day.
So, committee assignments?
You got to read it out, right?
Yeah.
Morgan Owen. Consideration of 2023 committee assignments for members of the Board of Supervisors. Is, are you, me? Okay.
I'll help you, love.
Okay, so we did have a couple of notes that I saw for committee assignments. Let's see. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about first?
Always.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I wanted to ask Supervisor Green if he doesn't mind swapping for, he's currently the member and I'm the alternate for the Continuum of Care. I seem to get deeper and deeper intimately involved with the Continuum of Care and just looking to see if he's okay with that exchange. And in exchange, since it is in your district, if you would like to take away the airport. Yeah.
Well, that's a two for anyway.
It's a two for anyway. I don't think there's anything to take away on that. And I'm already listed on it, right?
I don't believe so. Last time I looked.
Am I looking at the wrong list?
No, he is under the Airport Land and Use Committee.
Okay, I thought I saw someone else on there.
Anyway, so I don't think a change is needed. So no haggling needed on ALUC, but certainly open to the idea you would be the primary and I would be the alternate. Although I did just, we should clarify because they just asked me to apply to be the voting member, so I'll be a voting alternate, I guess, and then you'll have to clarify your status with them. But that's fine. I appreciate the interest. COC is very much in need of support and guidance, and I'm confident you will continue to do that.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else have comments?
I believe I was taken off RCRC. I believe that Chair Pyska was the alternate for that as well. That was another one of my findings on there.
Well, I was taken, I was made the alternate for CSAC.
Oh, I thought you wanted RCRC.
But I do want RCRC.
All yours.
Thank you.
And then since you are now on RCRC, I'd like to see if I can get taken off the GFSA and the other CA, GSCA.
Yeah, go ahead and connect.
And have Chair Pyska take the alternate unless she wants to Rochambeau Supervisor Crandall.
I'll be the alternate. Any other changes? I'll open it up to the public in the chambers or in Zoom.
Did you have a CSAC change?
7.6.
Committee assignments.
Just suggesting on ALUC, Bruno, you were trying to hand it off. So again, it ain't going to meet very often at all, but as far as who's closest, probably Jessica would be next closest. So you don't need another committee, Jessica, but ALUC, you're probably closer to the airport than Bruno's district. So just for housekeeping, I can't remember the last time an ALUC has ever met, but.
And I don't mind staying on. I was just trying to be nice and do an exchange, but I failed.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Can you clarify, this blue ribbon committee reference, that's not the Clear Lake Blue Ribbon Committee, right? That's a local Blue Ribbon Committee.
No, I think you're speaking of one and the same.
That's the Blue Ribbon Committee for rehabilitation in Clear Lake?
Yes.
Well, I'm not going to arm wrestle anybody for it, but I do have a definite interest in that committee, and I expect it's going to have a busy year. So, but I will not arm wrestle, but I'm open to serving on that if Supervisor Crandall or Simon would allow me to do that.
Yeah, if you wanted to, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I don't know, EJ, Woody?
Yeah, I'm fine staying on if you're, unless you want, if you want to stay on moke, I will. But I'll still stay on. Yeah. I mean, I've been pretty active.
Blue Ribbon?
Blue Ribbon Committee.
You want to stay on?
Yeah.
And you want to?
Yep, and I won't allow Michael Green to step into that position.
And then do we need to make a switch for the CSAC one as well, since it has Supervisor Green as the alternate?
Yeah. That one, yeah, both RCRC and CSAC will be the alternate.
I think that's what we approved last time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be CSAC alternate.
Okay, I think I was in the middle of doing public comment. Any comment from the public? Chambers or Zoom on committee assignments for the board?
None on Zoom.
Okay, then I will bring this back to the board for action.
Susan.
Oh, Susan?
If I may?
Sure.
Yes, on a few items, we have some ad hoc committees that may have run their course. And if you'd like, I could recommend a few that could probably go away at this time. We can always regenerate them if we need to.
Yes.
First would be the CDD Ad Hoc Committee. The Economic Development Task Force. I was thinking that with the onboarding of a new Economic Development DCAO that we'd reorganize and reconfigure and start anew with that person. My other thoughts were on the.
Okay.
Oh, roadmap task force, but I will defer to Bruno.
Oh, no.
Since that's his, EJ, your pilot projects.
Right, no, it's been, yeah, let's continue.
Continue that, all right. And then the South Main, I think we can discontinue it this time until they, meaning the City of Lakeport, applies again for an annexation.
And then Public Health Ad Hoc?
I'll leave that to you guys.
And did you speak about the CDD Ad Hoc either?
I did, I did. That was the first one, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, I think Public Health can go the same direction as the CDD Ad Hoc, and we can easily bring something back if there's a need for us to provide support in any way, shape, or form.
Did you say Cannabis Tax Committee, too?
No, I did not. I'll leave that up to the board.
And just for purpose of why some of these continue, the CARES Act ARPA Ad Hoc Committee, because of the fact that we have a deadline of 2024 to expend all those funds, keeping it alive so that we can come back for where we at, what needs to be brought back to the board, what are the options that we have. So I think that one should remain, though it would only meet probably one more time or two more times or something like that. But I think that it has a purpose still.
Those are my only recommendations.
I think maybe we could keep the Public Health Ad Hoc for a little while longer and see if it's needed rather than get rid of it right now. Are you okay with that?
I was just looking at some things that we haven't been.
Yeah.
Utilizing, and I have Ms. Grant's voice in my head telling me that ad hoc committees are supposed to have a specific purpose.
Limited duration.
And limited duration.
See, sometimes you listen.
Did you want to add something?
I'm sorry, yes, I just wanted to make clear that your board can determine by consensus to stop these particular committees, but it will have to come back to your board for an action item on the ones that you're no longer going to populate.
Okay.
Did we add cannabis tax? I know Supervisor Crandall mentioned it is the cannabis tax since we have the policy in place now. Will that go away or is that going to stay there?
I didn't recommend removal, but I was going to defer to the board.
It hasn't had, it's still had, what, Tino on there?
Well, again, this is before my time, but I know tax was reduced significantly last year, and I assume the committee had some role in that. So until things stabilize, I think, I don't really care, but I assume the committee popped up for a reason, and that was to give some input on what we're doing. And I expect that volatility will certainly continue for the next year or two.
It's actually for spending cannabis revenue.
For spending?
Yeah, it's the policy.
It's the policy for spending the revenue.
Now that you, so you're saying the policy is done?
Yeah.
And if it comes back, we can amend it at the board level so we don't need the committee? Was it kind of an ad hoc?
Yes.
All right.
I'm okay with eliminating.
So we're looking at eliminating the Cannabis Tax Committee, CDD Ad Hoc Committee, Economic Development Task Force, and the South Main Negotiating Team.
And Public Health. The Ad Hoc.
No, I thought we.
Yeah, we're going to keep Public Health. Yeah, I think we'll keep Public Health.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So those will need to come back on a separate agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then we need to formalize these committee assignments?
Need a motion. I move to approve the committee assignments for 2023 as amended.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So then we are ready to move on to item 7.7 for Advisory Board Appointments.
That's insane.
So we've got, the first board is Animal Care and Control, and we've got open seats here. You can start with the supervisor in District One. Looks like we have one District One applicant.
Tracy Hilger, okay. I'm buying with it. We're going to do them all in one motion, or do we need to do public comment and then do the motion? I guess that's the question.
You can, if you like, take public comment just on the item, and they can speak to each and every one as you like. The appointment to each group should be done individually.
Okay.
The timing's impeccable.
Okay, so are we going to, so we take public comment for each person?
No, for the whole item.
Okay, so we'll do our recommendations, and then we'll do, okay. Okay, so District One, Animal Control, is you recommending Tracy Thrasher-Hilger? And District Two?
So for District Two, I'm going to postpone at this moment. I have, I'm waiting on a response from Chief Hobbs. Before, it was Lieutenant Schneider who took care of the animal control in the City of Clear Lake. I thought it was good for the two to communicate and work together, and so I'm awaiting to see if he wants to continue that. I apologize, I missed making sure that they had an application in. Appreciate Charlene for submitting her application and not saying no, but I want to make sure first and give first dibs to the Police Department in Clear Lake. I think the collaboration is a good thing.
Okay. And District Three?
So I have two, four, six applications, and I noticed that there's two members at large. How are we going about that? How does that work?
Will you?
I have a recommendation.
I'll let her do a recommendation. So for District Three, I'm going to recommend Susan Cozad.
So since there's two members at large, I was thinking, since there's multiple applications for District Four and District Three, one member at large could come from District Four and one could come from District Three. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
So do you have a recommendation for?
Lynn Carey-Rana as a member at large would be my recommendation.
Lynn Carey. I don't think that she's on this list. Let me see.
Yeah, she's.
No, on my printout?
She's on the District Three list.
Yeah. Just as a point to clarify, it also says that she was hoping to be on Upper Lake Cemetery, but I don't see her on the Upper Lake Cemetery lower down, so let's not forget her in case that is one that you want to choose.
I made note of it for the chair.
Okay, member at large. Okay, District Four?
Yeah, I'm going to support reappointment of Kendall Neber, and I'm going to nominate Janice Hornby to be a member at large.
Okay, and there is one applicant from District Five, and that's Beverly Benedict Till. Okay, so.
I see Jonathan here, if you want to ask him.
Jonathan?
Does he have a preference?
Did you hear everyone that we are considering, and are there preferences or anything you want us to know?
The only thing I could say is I had Val Stallings reach out to me, who is Send Rover Onover. She is in Supervisor Green's district. I think she would also be really good for a member at large if, or if there was room. But beyond everything else, no, I don't have any other comments. That said, she received an application. She was, the last email she sent me is that she's looking to fill it out, so it's not in yet or anything or guaranteed, but that's all.
Okay. Does that change anything for you, Supervisor Green?
Well, I'm okay with what I nominated. And I, no, I appreciate the feedback honestly, and, you know, depending if we don't hear back from, you know, we may need another, well, that wouldn't work for your district. I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm okay with writing what I proposed. Perfect.
Okay. Okay, we have. Okay, we have, for the Childcare Council, we have Teresa Showen. Pretty okay with that one?
Do you want to like vote on each board as we go?
Oh, should we? Okay, I could do that. That's how you. Oh, should we, okay, I could do that. If that's how you want it, Johanna? Sure. Okay, so before we move on, we'll open it up for public input for the animal control applicants that we've selected. Anyone in the chambers or on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. Bring it back to the board for individual appointments.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Janice Hornby, Susan Cozad.
Are we doing them individually so that?
Oh, that's going to take a long time.
No, you can do all of them for each entity.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's good.
So Janice Hornby, Susan Cozad, Lynn Carey-Rana, Tracy Thrasher-Hilger, and was it Kendall Neighbors? And I think that's, those are the ones currently that were chosen unless I missed one. Nope. Which one did I?
Beverly.
Beverly.
And Beverly Benedict Hill. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Animal Control Board has been selected. We will move on to Childcare Council. We have one applicant, Teresa Showen. Any board comment, Teresa? Okay, public input in the chambers or on Zoom?
None on Zoom.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Teresa Showen to the Childcare Council.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is the Cockberry Council, and we are looking at some reappointments. Christopher Nettles is a reappointment, Kathleen McCarthy is a reappointment, Donald Strickler is a reappointment, and also Kenneth Schneider. There are two applicants, I'm sorry, there's one applicant, Darlene Warner, who serves on a subcommittee of the Cockberry Council, but I would like to wait until the council makes their decision and their vote on who it is that they would choose. She has been nominated. There are two other applicants, but there are bylaws that require certain amount of participation in a year for an applicant. I'm not sure the other two have met that, but if they want to start attending those meetings and participating, I welcome them to do that. But I do, I do want them to be able to select their own council members, so right now it'll just be those four who I'm recommending. Any comment from the board?
Can you repeat the four, please?
Christopher Nettles, Kathleen McCarthy, Donald Strickler, and Kenneth Schneider. Open to public for a comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Not on Zoom.
Oh, there is a comment, okay.
Hello, my name's Tom Arquette. I saw on your agenda that you had listed on the top for Cockberry Council for Beverly Benedict Hill. Was that one of the names of the persons that did not have a particular background to be on that committee?
You have to attend a certain amount of meetings throughout the year?
No, I'm not asking that. I'm just asking was it one of the persons?
She's one of the applicants.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Any other public comment? Okay, bring it back to the board if someone would like to. Oh, no, sorry. Can you come up and please state your name for the record?
He said Tom Arquette.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. You got?
Tom Arquette.
Okay.
How to spell that, I don't know. I don't want to butcher it, so.
Got to come up to the mic.
Come to the microphone, please. Or maybe he could come.
I think the individual.
Yeah, have the individual.
The individual who came to the mic needs to come.
We grand jurors know each other.
No. No, it doesn't work that way.
Do you want me to spell his name, or do you?
Well, he's coming up. If he could come and spell his name, please.
Okay, spelling is M-A-R-Q-U-E-T-T-E. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would have skipped the last T-E. Madam Chair, if I may, I move to approve Christopher Nettles, Kathleen McCarthy, Donald Strickler, and Kenneth Schneider to the Cobb Advisory Council, and I believe those were your four.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Cockberry Council is seated with four members. The next opening is for Countywide Parks and Rec. We have one applicant from District Three, Michael Herman.
Does it say there's five vacancies?
Yeah, one in each district, I think.
Have the others been filled?
Not yet.
Okay, well, we need to work on that.
Yep.
Do you have any comments?
Well, I think he's a good candidate. I just want to make sure we have enough people applying, if that makes sense.
Yes.
But I do know that this was sent out, Johanna, it was sent out when for recruitment?
I do have somebody to do that. I'm going to have. Do you want to?
Yeah, if you want to. You said you had something on that, too?
Yeah, we can always put Michael in if that's up to you.
We could wait, yeah.
Wait, okay.
But if there's anyone from the public that.
We'll wait on that one. Okay, we have our CSAs, two, District Three, three candidates.
Let's see, I have them right here. Yes, there is, yeah, Edward Smith, James McDole, and Scott Prowit. And I see there's five vacancies, but those three, they, yeah, because there's seven members total. So this would make five, or, yeah, it would make five total members for a board. So, yeah, I'm good with them, but of course, if there's anyone from the public that has anything to say or add.
Okay, public comment? Anyone from the public? Zoom?
None from Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board.
So I'll motion to appoint Edward Smith, James McDole, and Scott Prowit on the Spring Valley CSA Number Two.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, CSA Two members are seated. Next is Earth, Pamela Kaczynski, Kaczynski.
Yeah. And so with this one, there's still, it would, there's not going to be enough, so I'm going to just postpone. Like, is that what you said you were doing, postponing? Or what was the word you used?
Yeah, I'm postponing until I hear more.
Right, I'll do the same on that one.
Okay, public input on postponing? None?
All right.
Okay, bring it back to the board then. We will look at those in the future. EMCC, we have four. We have four applicants? Who's in charge of this one? Is it you?
Yeah. I had a question more than a comment. So some of the classifications on there, a big committee, and I know job titles are a thing, so no diss on anyone applying, but my question for Ms. Giagrosa is whether that was more of a consumer interested group or a private ambulance company. Gene Mueller, my old cardiologist, appreciate the interest. Don't know if she's representing a group or just herself. Certainly welcome her experience either way. Katie Baza does appear to be an EMT, but she's based in Fortuna, so don't mind the experience. She would fit in that category, but isn't local in that respect. And then certainly Mr. Sipeta is classified properly as a fire department, so not opposed to anybody on there necessarily, but I just want to make sure respectful of the composition of the committee. And I do want to shout out to any, any local applicants should probably get preference over out-of-county applicants.
Have any comments?
Actually, this is something that I made a mistake with earlier with the appointments. I know that I did email Cao Parker about the IFT. The EMCC is followed up by the IFT, so the emergency medical, I forget, to be honest.
Care Committee?
Care Committee. They meet, and then afterwards it becomes the intra-facility transfer. And so a lot of the same members are on the IFT, not all the same, but a lot of the same ones. And the ambulance services have a huge role in some of those conversations, and they're not always from a local area. And so it's been in the past that we've had some of them as members, so not being local is definitely not a reason to reject their application because they are absolutely a stakeholder in the services provided for the EMCC and IFT services provided here in Lake County.
I have it. I just follow up, you know, I.
That's what I'm referring to.
It wouldn't be a bar, but I assume the overriding goal of this is consumer oriented as opposed to, you know, the agencies involved and all that. They're always going to have opportunity to give direction through their agencies and on any particular agenda item. So again, I'm just questioning more the overriding mix by occupational status. And you know, again, if we have an EMT rep who's an actual EMT, that's great, but you know, before we assign people as a consumer interested group, I just prefer they be classified properly so that we can open up those appointments to consumers or groups representing consumers as opposed to a private ambulance company in the case of REACH. So don't oppose their participation, but I would request they wear the proper job titles when we fill those seats.
On the application, that's what I was looking for, if it speaks to the category that they would fulfill. Because we got Program Director for REACH, I guess that would go under private ambulance, since that's basically what is offered through their services, just not in an ambulance as we think of. And then MedStar Ambulance, so that fits perfectly under that as well. So at this moment in time, there it is. I don't know that Ashley Giagrosa would meet consumer interested group, and maybe that's what you're kind of alluding to. I think it's ambulance. Ms. Grant, do you mind if I ask if REACH fits under ambulance? I think it does.
I would assume so, since it's an emergency care.
Yeah, it's a carrier of sort, just not in a truck.
What does it say?
Yeah, okay. So I, I think that I will go with the list as is important representatives. And I'll allow Katie Baza to go under EMT representatives, and obviously Chief Sipeta fits perfectly within that as well, and Gene Mueller with the consumer interested group. Does that have a specific definition of consumer interested group versus a consumer?
I don't know. I'm not really involved in this.
So I'm going to hold up on that one and see if we can bring it back so I can get a definition of is it a consumer or is it a specific, like a nonprofit agency that would be a consumer interested group that ensures that care is provided in appropriate ways? I don't know. I'd like to see what that definition is, and I apologize for not being as prepared as I should for that one. But that would be what the motion would be.
Okay, so recommending all four of them?
I'm going to hold on Gene Mueller, just to find out what consumer interested group specifically means and how it is defined in the EMCC bylaws.
Okay, so you're going to be recommending three of them?
Yeah.
Okay, and public comment? Public input? Anybody on Zoom?
None on Zoom.
Okay, back to the board.
So Madam Chair, I move to approve Ashley Giagrosa, sorry if I butchered the last name, into the private ambulance company, Katie Baza under EMT representative, and William Sipeta, a reappointment for the fire department to the EMCC.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, okay, motion carries. Next is our Fish and Wildlife Committee, Advisory Committee. It looks like we have two applicants for District One, Ronald Ladeau and Brandon Hallgren.
Yeah, I'm good with both those.
Do we do two?
I don't, only one.
There's a reappointment of Roland, and then it looks like a new application from Brandon Hallgren.
So in my motion, do I do reappointment and then, because I'm okay with both those. I've talked to Roland Ladeau, and I know Brandon, so.
Do you know if Brandon fits within the category of agriculture, education, or recreation?
General public.
Yeah, he's general.
District One.
And there's only one from each district for the general public as far as the specific membership does?
Oh, I see, they're both general public, all right.
And that's why I was wondering if maybe one of them fits within agriculture, education, or recreation.
I don't know the answer to that. This is. So I have spoken with Roland Ladeau. If it's just the one that's available there, I'll go with Roland.
Looks to me like he would fit under recreation based on the limited description put on his application. We do have a spot available for recreation interest.
Okay.
Do you want to know?
This is the first time we've gone and said who fits where.
Yeah.
Gotten into the weeds, okay.
Or actually, there's two for Fish and Wildlife Conservation. He may even fit better under there, so. I think we have a spot.
Says there's 11 vacancies, so yeah, I think we definitely have a spot. So I'm fine with putting him under the recreation, Brandon under recreation, reappoint Roland under the general public District One, so.
Okay, and it looks like District Four?
Yeah, we can reappoint Mr. Hencliff.
Reappoint, and appoint the District Five applicant, Stephen Mayfield. So we've got four. And any further comments before I open up to the public? Public, board chambers or Zoom? Okay, bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Roland, a reappointment of Roland Ladeau, Ladeau and Brendan Hallgren to, I forget what I said now, recreation. Richard Hencliff, general public District Four, and Stephen Mayfield, general public District Five.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Fish and Wildlife is seated. Next is Hartley Cemetery, District Four. Next is Hartley Cemetery, District Four. Two openings and a reappointment.
I apologize, that caught one, that caught me. But I'm going to go ahead and move to reappoint Trilly Templeton and appoint Marsha Wells.
Okay, open it up to the public. Any comments here in the Zoom? No? Okay, bring it back to the board.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, Cemetery is seated. We have one applicant for the Heritage Commission.
I know the one applicant in my district is Elizabeth Larson, and I'm, I'm fine with appointing. It just looks like we have seven vacancies. Not sure. But I mean, if we have, if we can appoint, I'll appoint. I'm fine with appointing right now if there's.
I have one in the works. I just haven't been able to follow up on that. I, I'd like to see what the Heritage Commission can do. I know I've spoken with Director Turner about it, and I think there's a, some, some interesting things that can be done.
Okay.
So they can't meet until there's a quorum? And there's seven? Okay, so we'll need.
So we're going to hold off and readvertise that, or?
He wants to go ahead with the appointment and then we'll just work to make, fill those vacancies.
No, I was just saying I'm comfortable moving forward, but if we want to readvertise, I'm fine with that, too.
You want to wait, then?
I mean, I'm fine either way. Would, would it matter if I appointed now or we would just not look for a district?
Just means you don't have to fill that position for you.
All right. I'll, I'll just go ahead and appoint, yeah. So you can open it up to the public if there's any comments and then I'll.
Okay, public? Chambers or Zoom? None?
Nope.
Okay, I'll bring, bring it back to the board for action.
So I motion to appoint Elizabeth Larson for the District Three seat for the Heritage Commission.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope, okay, one seat is filled. And the IHSS, we have 11 vacancies and one applicant, District Three.
Oh, it's my, I didn't even know that one was mine. I'm fine with appointing. I know there's 11 vacancies, I mean, but if we, if we want to, like I said, it's just like the last one, I'm willing to move forward.
Okay. Well, it's one more than we have then. Okay, public comment? Chambers or Zoom?
That.
Okay, back to the board for action on Teresa Feder Johnson.
So I will move to appoint Teresa Feder Johnson for the In-Home Support Services Public Authority Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Kelseyville Cemetery, Robert Ranker is our applicant for reappointment. And, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Public comment on this? Chambers or Zoom? Back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Robert Ranker, or reappoint Robert Ranker to Kelseyville Cemetery District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Now we are on last, District Three, we have one applicant, Kevin Wasick.
I see Kurt McKelvey's here if he wants to come up and speak on public input. Do you want to open it?
Okay. Well, I was just, do you want to do?
I'm looking to postpone because I only have one, but I know that Kurt's related to, he wants to speak on.
All right, I'll open up public comment, board chambers.
Hi there. My name's Kurt McKelvey. I'm a resident in Lucerne and previously served on the, the council. First of all, I'd just like to put forward my support for Kevin Waitscheck's reappointment. And secondly, I'd like to just let the board know that according to the current bylaws of the Lucernary Town Hall, we're supposed to have two-year staggered terms. So I would hope that when Kevin is appointed, he's appointed for a full two-year term. The other thing I wanted to mention is this board of supervisors just appointed me along with several other council members this last year to what I believed was a two-year term. However, I was just informed two days prior to the first that, that my term was ending along with Jason Mohan's and Melanie Lim, which is unusual to me. We're, we're supposed to have two-year staggered terms. The previous council members that were appointed in 2020, or 2021, rather, those members were able to finish their two-year term without any issue. And I received an email, it was two days prior to the first, saying that all five council seats would be open. I immediately emailed county administration back saying that that had to have been a mistake, that it's got to be some sort of error because I was just appointed months ago, along with, you know, Melanie Lim and Jason Mohan. And I was told by county administration that, well, that's what they have on their end and therefore we all need to reapply rather than being reappointed. I, I feel that this is a, an error in, in terms of the board of supervisors and county administration not abiding by the bylaws. I was told that the reason for this was because our bylaws was just changed. Now, that is the case. Our bylaws were just changed in the previous months. However, the portion pertaining to terms was not changed. We have had two-year staggered terms since the beginning of our council. That has been a landmark of our bylaws since its inception. That has not changed at all. So to be told that that's the reason for us not being reappointed is, I, I don't feel that that's accurate. And essentially what I'm seeing is, is that because of this gap in reappointment, it's left me, along with several of the other council members, kind of in a state of limbo. Because I would like to put out the agenda for the Lucerne Maintenance Subcommittee meeting that's supposed to be this Thursday. I cannot do that because I, I don't believe I currently have the authority because I've been told by county administration that I'm not on the council currently. And basically, rather than fixing this issue, I've been told that we all need to reapply anyway, even though it was my understanding that, that we were appointed for a two-year term. So what I'm asking for is for the board of supervisors to remedy this by reappointing the three council members from, that were appointed during last year so that they can finish their two-year term. So the only issue with that is, is if you guys are to consider that, it probably likely wouldn't get to your table until next Tuesday. The regular meeting needs to be agendized next Monday. So this is definitely going to stifle or, or delay the council meeting or, or acting on anything in this month. And I'd like to avoid that. So basically, I'd just like to, again, extend my support for Kevin Waitscheck's reappointment, but I'd also like to request that the, that the board of supervisors perhaps consider holding a special meeting on perhaps this Friday to reappoint Jason Mohan, Melanie Lim, and myself so that we can finish our two-year term for the council.
Johanna, did you want to, or did you, I can answer some of that. Yes, and so I remember we had a discussion as well when the initial notice went out and we had a discussion and I thought that that was accurate, what you just said about appointing for two years. And then when I talked to Johanna, she had mentioned with staff that the way that it works is you filled Lonnie or Kisa's spot, which was appointed in '21. Two, two years prior to that, Lonnie was appointed. Prior to that, in 2017, there was, it's always been all five for some reason. And so that's why they were appointing this time one and two-year terms because it hasn't happened before. So that's what the whole goal was, was to get on track. They're doing the same with Earth as well because there's some, there's some discrepancies there as well. And so that's why they put out that notice. And so Melanie had filled the position from Danielle. Prior to that was Loretta Krentz. And so those five were appointed in 2021 and come up this December. And so because it's been the practice to do all five, they're at that. However, this time, there would be three, three one-years and two-two-years. And so that's why we went, that's why it went that way. And so that's why she put out the notice.
Okay, so even if I were to reapply today, the, like I said, the, the application wouldn't reach your guys' desk until next Tuesday.
We don't have a meeting next Tuesday.
Exactly. So that, you know, there are very timely issues that the community of Lucerne is, is wanting to meet about, particularly maintenance and then also the, the proposed sale of the castle. And the community would like to have those discussions without, without any delay. And so I would just hope that, that this board of supervisors would consider perhaps holding a, a special meeting on Friday to consider re, reappointing those, those council members. And if we need to reapply, that shouldn't be a problem.
The, I've just been given an email when you were noticed in June that you'd be serving from June 21st to January 2023. There's an email that states that. So you were, that's what I meant by you were serving Lonnie's term and so.
I, I acknowledge that that is the case. I understand at this point that that is, that, that I was completing her term. So at this point, I'm just kind of transitioning to the other issues in, in terms of just making sure that these meetings go forward without any unnecessary delays to the community. Is, is that something that the, that this board of supervisors would be open to in terms of having a special meeting to reappoint so that there's no undue delay to the council meeting this month?
I, I mean, I, I, I had a similar issue with the Cloughberry Council and noticed that there were, that everyone needed to be reappointed. And so I contacted everyone and had them submit their paperwork in time. So I, it's, it's up to you.
No, I'd like to just postpone until a later date and move forward from there.
Okay.
And if there's a need to have a discussion, I can look at holding a informational town hall conducted by me until we can get reappointments ready for one of the further date, dates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment on this issue, on this item?
I just want to follow up on that because I think I'm looking at my future with my advisory council. Similar thing, we haven't even passed our bylaws yet to stagger our terms, but other than a one-and-done announcement that applications are open, I'm not sure everyone got that. I don't know that I have any applications from my people. So if we're going to postpone it, fine, but maybe giving direction to readvertise and whatever our normal advertisement route is, if it's just a mass press release, it's really easy to kind of lose sight of that. But continue it, sure, but maybe figure out a way to readvertise, not through whatever our standard process is, for sure, let's do that. But I know, I know people are going to be interested in applying in yours. I know people are going to be interested in applying in mine, and yet to date, I don't have any applications. So I do think possibly there might be some room for improvement or repetitive messaging when we do have these committee appointments coming open. And again, I'm, I'm going to be looking at the same thing with my council because I'm going to have to get a whole bunch of new applications. We're going to have to get the bylaws amended, even though we're in the new terms, you know, so my current council is serving beyond their, their terms. And so who can actually approve the bylaws and then how we're going to advertise for the appointments and get the appointments done is going to be challenging. So I just want to acknowledge the concerns raised by the gentleman. Certainly, we want to continue it so we get a broader pool of applicants, but giving, giving maybe some additional direction to staff so they can help us, help our potential applicants get in there, may, may be prudent.
It's also prudent at the end of the year, when you're looking at November, December, to reach out to your advisory members and see who's interested in continuing and who needs to reapply and kind of get that paperwork buttoned up as much as you can in November and December. That's really helpful. Okay, so do we have any more public comment on the last District Three seat?
I, I just had one quick question for Anita. Considering I, there, there's like a kind of a gray area. I'm fairly certain that I'm not on the council at this point because that's, that seems to be the position of the county. So I, I would say at this point, you know, it would be not kosher for me to put out an agenda to, to hold a meeting. So I'm, I'm planning on not doing that at this point. I'd like to be able to continue the business of, of the council as soon as possible, but considering that's the situation, I, I understand that and I'll accept that. So I just want to get clarification. So I am not under any Brown Act requirements at this point?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what is meant by you're not under any Brown Act requirements. You're not under a Brown Act requirement to hold a meeting if you don't have a quorum. And it doesn't sound as if there's members to hold, to have a meeting. So under the Brown Act, you couldn't have a meeting if you don't have a quorum of sitting board members.
I suppose my question, just to be more specific, is, is would there be any limitations between me speaking with the previous, or what I understood as being the current council members, but I guess they're the previous council members now, Melanie Lim, Jason Mohan, Kevin Waitscheck, and Rebecca Schwanger? There's, so there's, there should be no Brown Act limitations in terms of my being able to discuss with them at this point, considering we're no longer seated council members? Is that my understanding?
I don't think so.
So, so I can openly, you know, speak to them in regards to community issues without, I guess, basically the reason I'm asking is, is I'd like to suggest to them that they, they put in an application and, you know, to be reappointed. And I, and I just want to make sure that I'm not.
I don't think it's any different than the emails that you put out to them otherwise as well or connect to them, right? Am I right on?
No, but I would suggest that you might want county staff to send them out notifying them and just going through the standard procedure because you, you would want to avoid the appearance of having official status when you do not.
Exactly.
Or if you're reconstituted, having a compromised status by actions that you'd taken prior.
Exactly.
So out of an abundance of caution, I would suggest that this just go through the same, same advertising process, the same notification process as it does for everything else. And that way, it will proceed on a very even, very objective keel.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought and I just wanted to get that verified. So thank you.
There's nothing against, I know you mentioned something about a community discussion. There's nothing against freedom of speech on your own. I know you stated you wanted to talk about something. Like anybody can discuss anything in the public and that's, yeah.
Understood.
Just giving that, yeah.
Thank you.
And I sent out the link to them to reapply. So they have the link and the, a mechanism to reapply, so.
Like just recently?
On December 30th.
Okay, just for them to know where in their email it might be.
Is there anything on the website for this? I was just looking for a news item.
Yeah, there's a really easy fill-in application that's online. It's really made easy.
Is there any other public comment? I'd like to close public comment on this if there isn't anything else.
There is a hand.
There is a hand, okay.
I don't know who it is. Oh, there it is. I can barely see it. Amelia Smithson.
Okay, Amelia Smithson.
Hope I didn't miss it from before.
Go ahead, speak.
Hi, my name's Amelia Smithson. I'm a resident of Lucerne and I regularly participate in the Lucerne Town Hall meetings. And so I'm just a little concerned in listening to this meeting where one of our individuals who participate in the meetings is actually not currently appointed. I know that he did ask your panel for a special exception to have a meeting in which it could be approved. I just am a little concerned. I don't want there to be any like arbitrary or barriers to meeting or making sure that our community concerns are being addressed, especially with the pending sale of the castle. We met in December and I just want to make sure that there's a timeline in place and that there's not any arbitrary barriers in scheduling that's going to prevent us from being able to meet and come together as a community to organize our thoughts and protests.
Noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm bringing this back, I'm closing public input on this applicant and bringing it back to the board. What you're intending with this?
Postpone.
Postpone, okay. Okay. The next is we have the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Board. We have 10 vacancies and we have three applicants. and we have three applicants for reappointment. We have a District Four reappointment, our partnership reappointment, and District Five reappointment. So Supervisor Green, are you?
All right, playing catch-up.
Okay, so I'll open it up to the board for our partnership appointment, everyone okay with that, and I am definitely okay with the District Five. Okay, so back to you Supervisor Green.
All right, I don't even see which one.
It's Carrie Manning.
Oh yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Sorry, okay, it's general membership, it's not representative of a specific district, it's just the district that they're from. But I would suggest that Carrie Manning, in being in the position that she is, in behavioral health, and the knowledge and expertise she brings to the table, I would say that we would want her to.
Yes. Okay, public input, boardroom, chambers, Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Kim Schott, Nicole Carrery, and Carrie Manning to the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. We'll move on to RCD, we have one applicant from District One.
Good with that.
Okay.
Quick question on that, who is the other vacancy, is it, which district is it? It just says two vacancies, oh, member-at-large, gotcha, I didn't keep reading past District One, never mind.
Okay. I will open that to the public. Chambers, Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, bringing it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Katie Schmidt-Hopper to District One, RCD.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, perfect. Okay, now we're on to Worth, and we have four applicants.
Worth? You skipped.
We just skipped Spring Valley, CSA.
You skipped Spring Valley and Upper Lake?
No, we did Spring Valley.
Yeah, I thought we did Spring Valley already.
This world different.
Guess I'm on a different list.
Was it that you had, pull it on?
The CSA we did.
Yeah, that was appointed already.
Oh, okay.
Yes, she was done.
So Worth, we have four members?
Yeah, so I have Claudine Pedrencelli, Linda Alexander, Melinda Wright, and Thomas, I think it's Thomas Acevis, and so I have them all for reappointment, there's four vacancies, I'm willing to appoint all four.
Do we need to specify, I guess the reappointment specifies the member-at-large?
Let's see.
Yeah, what's the difference?
There's a strange difference between a public member and a public member-at-large. Agreed.
I'll have to look at the applications, so if you want to open it up to put.
Maybe it's because Western Region is more than just Upper Lake, and so there's three public members from Upper Lake, and one from the outskirts, but still within the boundary of Worth.
Yeah, yeah. They've all basically put the area, like just the member, board member, none of them identified, that's a bachelor or valley.
Oh, we got one, we got one in Winter Springs.
What's that, sorry?
We got one in Winter Springs, so that might be the at-large.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Which one was that?
That would be, I think it's Linda.
Yeah.
Yeah, Linda Alexander.
At-large.
You broke it.
I broke it.
I know Thomas is in Nice, Melinda's in downtown Upper Lake, Claudine is Woodson Court, Upper Lake, yeah. Oh, Thomas, that's right, there it is, because Tim's the Nice member, okay. So there it is.
Okay, I'll open it to the public, for the Worth appointments. Anyone in chambers? Zoom? No? Anyone in Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
So a motion to appoint Claudine Pedrencelli, Linda Alexander, Melinda Wright, and Thomas Acevis to the Worth group.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Worth Board is seated. The last one I have is the Upper Lake Cemetery.
So we have four applicants, three vacancies, and so I'll do the reappointments, Anita Crabtree and Valerie Duncan, and then the, out of the two, out of the new, I appointed Lynn to the Animal Control, so I'll appoint Maya Duncan as the third choice.
Okay, public, chambers or Zoom? Okay, bring it back to the board.
I believe that was a motion?
Yes, I will move to appoint Valerie Duncan and Anita Crabtree for reappointment, and appoint Maya Duncan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, did we get everybody? Yes.
Believe so.
See you.
Yes.
I have a recommendations, since we have a hard 3:30 interview with a prospective PHO, I recommend that we go into closed session at this time to prepare, and to transition into a closed Zoom, and then we'll come back out of closed session after those two items, and finish and complete the agenda, that's my recommendation at this time.
Okay, I agree with that.
I have a question in finishing up 7/7.
Yes.
With all of the approvals that have just occurred, and some of them having some glaring holes in filling in, wondering if, when possible, to provide us with the latest list, so that we know what our homework is to try and fill in those gaps.
We'll bring that back on the 24th, or sooner, if you'd like.
Well, I don't know that.
24th is filling out.
I don't know that it needs to be on the agenda itself, but for us, for, to know what still, what still has a gap, so we can go out in our community and make sure we get those applications in, and hopefully, they can be on there on the 24th, but.
How about the beginning of next week, after the holiday?
Whenever is possible, I don't want to put a timeline on it.
Okay.
So we have, calendar is in 7.10, right, is that it, besides closed session?
Sure.
Everything for consent was, yeah, so we just have the two items to come back. Okay, we'll be going into closed session with public employee evaluation, Health Services Director, that's item 8.1, 8.2 is public employee appointment pursuant to government code section 54957V1, interview for a public health officer, appointment for a public health officer. What?
How long is 710 going to take? I just, just, my, my.
Just a second reading.
My personal opinion is.
Calendars, too?
Not calendars, not calendars, but I think 710, being what it is, I think we should get it over with, rather than putting it afterwards, where we lose everybody, and then people are wondering what we did, and so I think, I personally believe that we could just get through it.
Okay, let's get, go through seven, item 710. Addendum, second reading of an ordinance amending section 2-3A, point one of Article One, Chapter Two of Lake County Code. Admin.
Yes, presented before you is the second reading of the ordinance, that was the corrected version that was presented on December 20th, 20th, for your consideration.
Comments on the board?
Ditto to the comments I made last time, so.
I will open this up to the public, board chambers, anyone here, or Zoom?
There are no hands in Zoom.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
I will offer the ordinance.
Okay, roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we will go to closed session. Do I need to read them again?
Yeah, go now.
Two more times.
8.1 and 8.2, come back for calendars. Was there any action taken in closed session?
Madam Chair, there was no action taken out of closed session.
Okay, then the last item that we have is 7.1 calendars, but do we have consensus to continue that to next week?
Or the 24th.
I mean, the 24th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So then, let's adjourn this meeting.
Good.
Okay.